I'd like to welcome everyone tonight to the Barnstable Town Council meeting. This is February 2, 2023. I can't believe it's already February. But let's get this meeting started. In accordance to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, I must inquire whether anyone is recording this meeting and if so, to make your presence known. Okay, we're not seeing any. Roll call, please.
Counselors.
Here.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Here.
Kuzak.
Present.
Rapacecki.
Present.
Levek.
Here.
Ludkey.
Here.
Mendez.
Here.
Neary.
Here.
Schnep.
Here.
Shaughnessy.
Here.
Starr.
Here.
Stein-Hilber.
Here.
Now, thirteen.
Okay, if we could all please rise with the Pledge of Allegiance and please remain standing for the moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Just want to continue to remember the war in the Ukraine and for the people there and that there would be a possible peace in that area soon. Thank you. Thank you. Can be seated, and I'm just going to make a presentation, long overdue presentation. Thank you. If you can just be with me for a moment. I just, this is a time that's long overdue, and I just want to welcome Wendy Northcross up front here. And I have this piece of furniture to present, and I'm going to read it. So there's a quick note. I'll put a dent in it. A quick little story is Wendy was the recipient of the Mercy Otis Women Warren Cape Cod Woman of the Year Award. And I was on the agenda to give this proclamation at the time. And this was in June of 2021. And it's been a while since we've consistently been in person, but the thought was to always be able to present this in person. And I just wanted to take that time and just, again, make sure that they, that we were in person and that, you know, council could have an opportunity. And I just wanted to make it as poignant and important as a moment as it should be and recognized of that. So I am going to read it in its entirety as it should be read. The Barnstable Town Council hereby recognizes Mercy Otis Warren, Cape Cod Woman of the Year, Wendy Northcross. Whereas Wendy has had an extraordinary career as a CEO of the Cape Cod Chamber of Commerce since 2001. She has received national recognition for her work and leadership. Some of her most renowned achievements have been spearheaded wastewater planning for the Cape, putting into place a Cape-wide transportation plan. She also works hard to increase the overall broadband to the area. Whereas Wendy has worked tirelessly to make Cape Cod a better place for all through her passion and dedication volunteering on myriad boards with numerous organizations, which continues to this day. Whereas Wendy volunteers efforts led, volunteer efforts led her to become a co-founder of the JFK Hyannis Museum, which has proved to be a major attraction to visitors and residents of Cape Cod. Actually, it is one of the top tourist attractions in southeastern Massachusetts. And now Wendy is the current director, ironically enough, of that museum. Whereas Wendy is alumnus of Cape Cod Community College and has served as past chair of the Board of Trustees, as well as being a trustee for 10 years. In that role, she has chaired the successful campaign to build the LaRusso Applied Technology Building. Whereas Wendy has served over 30 years as a member of the Hyannis Rotary Club, she was president and honored for her outstanding leadership for being awarded the Paul Harvest Award Fellowship. This is the highest award an individual Rotarian can receive. By the way, I'm halfway there. Whereas, an active member of the West Parish Church, Wendy served on the Board of Deacons, including a term as chair. Whereas Wendy has been a member of the Workforce Investment Board and served on the Board of Job Training and Employment Corporation, also known as J-Tech. Whereas Wendy has also served on the Boards of the Arts Foundation, Town of Barnstable Affordable Housing Growth and Development Trust Fund Board, and Cape Cod Cooperative Bank. She has been a liaison to the Barnstable County Regional Substance Abuse Coalition. Whereas in 2014, Wendy was named one of the Cape's 12 Most Powerful Women by Cape Cod Magazine. And in 2015, she was awarded the inaugural Founder's Community Leadership Award by the JFK Hyannis Museum, again, where she is currently director. Whereas Wendy has a passion for all things Cape Cod with her strong work ethic and endless hours. As a volunteer, she has really left her mark on our community. Truly Wendy has made a difference in the lives of the people of Cape Cod. Now therefore, be it reserved, resolved, that the Barnstable Town Council does hereby congratulate Wendy Northcross in all, in all she may continue to do for the town of Barnstable and its visitors. In witness whereof, I, Matthew Levek, President of the Barnstable Town Council, hereon to set my hand and cause the official seal of the town of Barnstable to be affixed on the day she received the award, which was the second day of June 2021. And here we are on February 2, 2023. And I do want to take this moment to say that this was in, this was also an announcement of kind of your retirement.
Yes.
At the time. And, and retirement from being the, leading the Cape Cod Chamber of Commerce, really. But like LeBron James once said, you didn't take your talents to South Beach. You continue to serve here in, in our community. And currently, not only do you serve as the Director of the JFK Museum, but you also serve on our local comprehensive plant committee representing West Barnstable. So thank you so much for your service to our town and congratulations on your continued success and service to our community. I mean Now I'll give you a moment if you want to say something. And, and also give the councils an opportunity to say something.
Well, thank you. I, you know, poor Matt got squeezed off the agenda at the official ceremonies. He was like, we ran out of time. So, so thanks for remembering. As a favorite president of mine once said, everyone can make a difference and everyone should try. And that's all I've tried to do. So I've been very, very honored to have had the wonderful success that I've had, but that's only because a lot of people came along and helped. And I've just been inspired by people like you that do the hard jobs every day, getting elected and sitting here and working on the hard issues. And, and I appreciate working with folks like you. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And if you can stay right there. Yes, please. And I just want to give the council an opportunity to, to make comment. But I know there are some that do. Council Clark, please.
Thank you very much, Wendy. I'm proud that you're from West Barnstable.
It's something in the water.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Clark. Anybody else? Council Schnep, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Wendy, for everything you've done and that you continue to do. You, you show up at so many things and, and I know that your support really influences a lot of people. So thank you for showing up.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Council Schnep. Council Ludkey, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I almost thought you must have misread that because she should be the Woman of the Decade. I mean, absolutely an amazing resume there. Thank you so much for everything you've done. Incredible, beautiful work. Thank you.
I've been working for 47 years, so, but that's whole lifetime work, but thank you.
We'll make a generational award. We'll do that next year. Madam Vice President.
I love that. Anyway, I want to say thank you for being such an incredible role model to our, our girls and young women in town and for, for understanding that it's the little things, it's serving on the committees and the boards and showing up to vote and speaking your mind and being an organized thinker and, you know, 30,000-foot view stuff and goal setting and visioning and all these things that you've done. It really makes a difference to our community. And everything from the blue economy to, I mean, you know, everything. And it's just, you know, you lose a lot of Thursday nights, Friday nights, Saturday mornings, Sundays. And, you know, I hope somehow receiving an award like this and hearing our thanks makes up for time lost with family or, you know, whatever, because these commitments run deep. But, you know, your commitment to your community is, is very much appreciated.
I have to give a shout out to my husband who's watching it on streaming. So, yeah, very patient husband, yes.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Long overdue. And I'm glad I got to stay on as President long enough to do that. So with that, special recognition and thank you for being here for that. And really, there's a good crowd here. I just want to say thank you for being here and being present at the meeting. At this point in time, it is time for public comment. So first, foremost, if we want to honor the people in the audience here, if someone wants to speak, public comment, please sign in your name. Sign in, I should say. State your name, and you would have three minutes, please.
Good evening. Thank you, President Levek. I wanted to, my name is Laura Cronin, and I'm a resident of Hyannis. And although I do wear different hats here in Hyannis, roles in the community, I am speaking to you tonight as a resident of Hyannis. I'm glad to be here and see you in person as well, which is one of the things I wanted to talk to you about tonight. I'm asking for the town council to bring all of the public meetings back to live meetings and eliminate the Zoom-only format. While there are few that have rejoined the live format, many have not. It's been almost three years since some of them have come back full-time, and many of them are key commissions and boards with important decisions and votes that will affect our town and community. And everyone should have an opportunity to hear and speak on it if they choose freely. And in my opinion, the Zoom-only format is limiting the public to fair and open access to these discussions. I have personally tried to engage through this format, but unless it's a hot issue, it's not worth the aggravation, confusion, or trying to sit through the waiting room block until someone lets you in or listen to others waiting along with you, talking and, and doing whatever else they forgot to turn on and off until you have a chance to talk. You can't watch along on TV because of the noise feedback, so you miss out on other input, discussions or dialogue until after it's done. Watching or streaming the meeting after the fact is almost just as aggravating. It's like sometimes watching a confusing Hollywood Square Brady Bunch TV format, if you're dating myself, I guess. It's, it, it feels impersonal, and there's no opportunity to connect with other people of the committee or public. You're just a face, a black box with a name or an image. And it's as though we deliberately don't want the public involved. For those of us who can navigate the forum, it's not easy. Imagine how much of the public can't or don't have computer or for whatever reason misses the opportunity to have their voice heard and engage in discussion. Some have been told that everybody likes it and it gets things done quicker, but at what cost? On one meeting I was on, it's still Zooming in the Zoom-only format, one of the presentations or participants of the public was given their turn to speak on the matter by the administrator. I heard a person in the presentation verbally make a rude comment and that which others in the waiting room could hear, I was one, and then they muted themselves. And how was that okay? It's not the first time this kind of behavior happens in the Zoom-only format meeting settings. If we were live, the comments or gestures probably still would have been made, but it would have been in public and made outside maybe of earshot or in a public setting, hopefully discourage it altogether. That wasn't acceptable. During live meetings, you can, you can see people's faces, hear their voices, make connections, learn something new, and you can actually ask someone what they meant or clarification. Many people used to come to the meetings and had no intention of speaking but to hear what was being said or support someone who had the courage to get up to speak, only then to have that person, after hearing others get up and speak themselves. So many times we heard, I had no intentions of speaking tonight, but then they actually do. Last week, there was a live meeting in the Barnstable High School cafeteria on Great Streets downtown Hyannis. It was an incredible turnout and community engagement on both sides of the options. The town felt this issue was important enough to have that format, and rightly so. They had display boards, maps you can actually read and understand of what was being proposed and an opportunity for one-on-one discussion if you had questions. There are residents in the community, myself included, that think there are many other issues going on or coming up in the future. They're just important and would like to have the same access on regularly scheduled public meetings. Seeing the community engaged for or against any issue, I think is what we want. Again, in my opinion, we are siphling some of the public feedback or engaging them by using a format that isn't necessarily open to everyone. If you want to reengage the residents of the town, giving them all access and the chance to be seen and heard is a start. So I'm asking the town council to consider this request and moving all public meetings live going forward from tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Cronin. Anybody else in the public? Welcome back.
Welcome back. I'll sign in. Hi, I'm Wendy Northcross, from West Barnstable, and I'm here just to speak to the zoning change before you tonight. Be very short. Basically, we need Barnstable to work well. We need our hospital. We need our fire department. We need our schools. We need our cultural institutions. We need our restaurants. We need our shops. We need our working families. We need our retirees, and we need our young professionals. In order to make Barnstable work, we need year-round rental housing, and we need this well-vetted concept of zoning change to pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Welcome. Take your time. Again, if you could just sign in, state your name, and three minutes, please.
Hi, I'm Irene Elmer. I'd like to second what Laura said. I have felt in the last couple of years really disenfranchised. There are a lot of us who, I'm not technically savvy, so I really can't do the Zooming. And besides me not being able to do the Zoom, I think there are a lot of people who financially don't have the use of computers that can Zoom. So you're leaving out a lot of people. You're also leaving out a lot of people who don't understand English that well and don't have the capabilities of being able to Zoom and being able, and they probably feel like I do, but they probably are shy and are nervous about Zooming. So I think I really feel very, very strongly to back what Laura said. All right, we need to have in-person meetings. We need to have people that can meet face to face. And going along now, since I'm here with what Wendy just said, in regards to the new zoning in Hyannis, we certainly need housing. We all know that. I'm fortunate to have a house that I absolutely love in Hyannis. But I also am a property owner who has been paying a lot more in taxes. Our fire department needs help. Our water department needs help. Last year, I read about a meeting in a village north of Hyannis where there was a question of water, and the person commented about giving water to the city of Hyannis, not sharing the water of the city of Hyannis. If we are going to have a lot more concentrated housing in Hyannis, which we do, and a lot of us, we welcome, welcome it. But you have to help us. We're one town. And we're taking, we're taking the brunt in regards to taxes for paying for, help for our fire department, to have equipment for the fire department, for our water, which we're getting a lot of supplies from Yarmouth. But if we ask other villages, then we should be, we're a town. We're one town, and we all need to help each other. So, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Teresa Peretti. Regarding the zoning change, I don't have a problem with it. I just think that if you're going, when it's done, keep as much green space as you possibly can, because the density, when you take it away, you change the look, and you need the green space. A little more art, too. Keep the traffic one way on Main Street. If you're going to put more people on the street, it's still safer. I came down tonight. I walked from Winter Street, and it was nice. I only had to look for the traffic coming from one way. And, let's see, no buildings taller than three stories. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Anybody have an extra pen they could put on the podium? Please, that'd be great.
Yeah, it's done. My name's Lori Crowley. So last night, you would have received an email from me. I had, went to the planning board on the Shoestring Properties on School Street, and I do also agree the density and height needs to be controlled here. And we do need to offer housing to different areas, not just Hyannis Village. Let's give everybody the opportunity to have some housing in their areas. But one of the things I wanted to talk about on that is that a lot of the housing we need is affordable housing for all of our people that are in the service industry, working our restaurants, working in our, you know, laundromats, all the grocery stores, everywhere that we go to that worked all through the pandemic while we were sitting at home doing our work. They need the affordable housing, and we're allowing these buildings to come in and have luxury housing. They were able to sidestep the affordable housing and put it somewhere on Barnstable Road and show nothing. They didn't show any plans on the affordable housing. And so they just showed the two beautiful, I believe the developer Stuart Bornstein said, "Don't looking, look at them as buildings. They're pieces of art." Well, where is the pieces of art for our affordable housing? Because we saw nothing in the plan. And I hope the planning board sits and thinks about everyone in our town, because these people deserve the same opportunity to live in a beautiful piece of art where those two buildings are supposedly wanting to be built. And same thing with Twin Brooks. You know, we should be looking for more affordable housing for our residents. Everybody should have a chance to have the same opportunity for a nice life. And I do want to agree with the woman that was just up. Main Street should stay one way. Not only nostalgically, I love it like that. I lived close by. I love to walk it. And if it's two ways, there's going to be worse cases for the people walking it. It's already pretty bad. If you're walking it one way, you really have to watch out. So two ways coming at you is going to be horrible. I say stay one way. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Elizabeth Worf-Bain, Director of the Hyannis Main Street Business Improvement District. Thank you for having us and this really wonderful topic coming up. I'm talking about the zoning change, which has been a while coming, very well thought out, I believe. We've been watching it over the years, and it's something that the Main Street bid has been advocating for as a top 10 facet that would help improve a downtown. If you look at the Urban Land Institute study for the 10 things you can do to revitalize a downtown, one of them, the top three, is housing. So housing is so important to have a year-round economy. And what do we need, when someone earlier mentioned taxes, what do we need to really bolster our taxes is jobs. And for people to have jobs, they have to live somewhere. So really, it's a chicken/egg kind of situation that we're in, and the best thing we can do is bolster our economy. The bid comprises of 108 properties worth $130 million altogether. So you can see that there's a gigantic tax base already in the downtown, probably the most concentrated jobs of all of Cape Cod. So I'm here to advocate that you need the housing density. If not here, where, right? So when you look at really great planning, you don't put them out, you know, So when you look at really great planning, you don't put them out, you know, far away from the centers. Look at what the Cape Cod Commission suggests. The most important thing you can do is build up the existing activity centers on the Cape. We are the capital of Cape Cod. So this is the place, and we are set up. We have the infrastructure. It's all here. So I think we just have to embrace the future of a year-round economy where you want your children and grandchildren to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? And we'll have a public hearing in regards to the, those items as well, so you can save your comment at that time, too, as well. Yes, sir. How are you?
Just fine. How are you doing?
Good.
My name is Bruce Prescott. I have a business, and I own a building on Main Street downtown. Please do approve the zoning change. We need more housing downtown, and please implement the two-way streets. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prescott. Anybody else? Okay, again, yes, sir.
Hi. My name is Conrad Watson, and--
Speak into the microphone, please, sir. That's fine. Take your time.
Hi, my name's Conrad Watson, and I've done a lot of rehab projects. I've done them on Mission Hill, Cambridge, Waltham, Brooklyn, Hudson, and South Boston. And one thing, one thing I've encountered when I've done these projects is I ask friends what they think, and they usually say I'm crazy. And I noticed, like, in the last couple of years when I retired here, that Hyannis was one of those types of communities that could really benefit from something like this zoning change since the mall went in. I came here summers back in the '50s and '60s, and Hyannis was just a great place to go. The only supermarket was AMP in Hyannis. We lived all the way in Bass River. We drove all the way over here. But I've invested a lot in the town here, probably directly and indirectly, close to $20 million in the last three and a half years. And I just, I just imagine, like, this four-story zoning going through and the people flooding Main Street and walking instead of driving. I think it would really, Hyannis really needs it. It'd be a great thing, and I hope you support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Anybody else before I go to anybody who's participating remotely? Okay. Sarah, do we have anybody that wants to participate remotely, please?
We do. It'll just be one second.
Thank you. And thank you again for everybody that came to the meeting and spoke in person.
Just waiting for them to come over.
Thank you.
Okay, first up for public comment on Zoom is Scott. Scott, you can unmute, and you have three minutes. Scott, it's your turn to speak. Go ahead.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Good evening. Yes, I have one comment that I'd like to make about the downtown Main Street and Village districts, particularly, it was something on page 35 with the downtown village, the downtown village section that was formerly zoned office multifamily and medical services. Have one concern about that, where it says that any limit, there's wide range of commercial uses, but it doesn't state what commercial uses. It also says that any commercial use over 5,000 square feet requires a special permit. But what I really want to know is, is there a cap on what a maximum square foot usage could be? Excuse me. Because I think one unintended consequence from that could be, where you do have an existing residence, an existing home that gets sold, and then that home, you know, gets knocked down, destroyed, and then a different type of commercial property gets built. So you end up, you know, the unintended consequence, you actually lose some existing houses. There is some precedent for this in the town. There's been, when there was a zoning change along the corridor, Basset Lane, North Street, and Stevens Street, you had areas which is, like now, the Mazda dealer, the Volvo dealer, those were all homes. And then when those zoning changes, the home was knocked down, developer, you know, put together an assemblage of properties together, and then you had a whole neighborhood just gone to become car dealerships. The other time this has happened in the town of Barnstable before is everything along the Yarmouth Road corridor, Willow Street, Rosary Lane. That was a neighborhood, again, we had zoning changes to make that a commercial industrial, and when a property was sold, you know, developers would make an assemblage of properties, and you had, you know, a neighborhood that was houses now become a larger commercial district. So my just concern is if there's a cap on what the square footage is can be, so we don't have unintended consequences of actually losing housing. And I also would like to echo the statement that the first commenter made is that, you know, this is one town, that, you know, the town of Barnstable, Hyannis is a village in the town of Barnstable, yet long-term residents, particularly generational residents of Hyannis, have had to bear the brunt and the burden of any development and, you know, have lost the quality of life over time. So I just want to make sure that, you know, people really think through some of these zoning changes. Overall, I definitely agree that there should be, you know, more housing. We just need to be careful of unintended consequences of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott, for your comments.
President Levesque, I just have a quick question. Are we holding our Zoom callers to the same standards as in-person callers, giving their full name and where they're from?
No, that's a great idea, though.
Okay, I think we should.
Sure, absolutely. So, moving forward. Scott, could you tell us your last name?
Scott does.
Thank you, sir.
Next for public comment, we have Hilda. Hilda, you can unmute, and you have three minutes.
Hilda, if you could give us, Hilda, if you can give us your first name and last name, that'd be helpful.
Good evening. My name is Hilda Hayes, and I'm calling in support of zoning changes in Barnstable. And I support the development of mixed housing, mixed developmental housing, and as the previous caller said before, in doing so, we just want to make sure that when the zoning changes happen, that it does not push away housing for commercial businesses, but specifically for housing accommodations. We are facing a tremendous shortage on the Cape, workforce housing, year-round housing, and summer housing, and we are at a standstill, and a lot of businesses are not able to have workers, or to employ people, because there's not enough housing available. And moreover, also, for our year-round residents, a lot of people are having a really hard time, a lot of people have been moving away. So anything that we can do in developing the zoning specifically for housing, whether it's multifamily, condos, apartments, and also, you know, for higher buildings, probably a four-story building, I'm not sure how that would work with our water system, but whatever it takes, the need is great, and it's dire. And I think the town of Barnstable needs to really push forward, because I think the longer we wait in doing these developments, it's going to be a lot more costly. And cost for housing now is through the roof for a medium, I mean, family housing. People are not making the kind of money for the prices of houses that are being sold. So I think the longer we delay in making the zoning, it's going to cost us a lot more. That's my two that I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being with us.
Next for public comment is Alisa Magnata. Alisa, you can unmute, and you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me? I believe I'm unmuted. Okay, thank you so much. Thank you for hearing my comments. For the record, my name is Alisa Magnata. I'm the CEO of Housing Assistance Corporation, and I am speaking in support of the downtown Hyannis zoning changes that are proposed. Right now, there is a high barrier to entry for small-scale construction. Infill housing projects are, and are much more expensive to get across the finish line and get done, because costs of construction is extraordinarily high. So with clear zoning and expedited permitting process, it'll save money on projects. And there are a lot of great ideas that will make Main Street much more lively and robust and economically diverse that are being squashed right now because of the zoning and not having a predictable path forward. So this proposal allows the town to control the look and the feel and have a streamlined regulatory process that will help both housing and economic development on Main Street. So that ideas, good ideas, that we all know, that people talk about, can move forward because they're financially viable, and then they're in the best interest of our community, not because of outdated zoning that is impeding progress. So I urge you to vote yes on this Hyannis zoning changes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Magnata.
Thank you.
That's all we have for general public comment on Zoom.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. And now it is time for council response to public comment. So starting to my left, anybody, council response to public comment? Okay, not seeing any. Anybody to my right? Council Lucky, please. I'm just going to work my way over.
Yeah, I appreciate everybody's comments, and I want to talk to what, let's see, who was it? I took so many notes on everybody. I think it was Irene that talked about the Zoom meetings and how difficult they are. And before I came to town council, I used to comment by Zoom, so I feel what she's saying. It's very difficult, and it's very intimidating, and it really does put people off. And the in-person meetings are maybe more challenging in terms of physically moving yourself into a location, but I do think you get a better participation. And I think one of the great examples of that is with the local comprehensive plans. We've been going around various villages. They've been hugely successful. So Irene, I really appreciate that, and I really think that that is what we should be doing. I wanted to ask Teresa and Gloria if they went to any of the Great Streets meetings, because they both expressed a desire to keep Main Street one way. And we had someone speak about how terrific that Great Streets event was. And I think if you went to those, you'd see the data was very clear on the safety associated with the two-way conversion. So, and who else? And I appreciate everyone speaking in support of the zoning changes, some really good comments there. Scott, I liked your warning about unintended consequences, and that's always something that we have to be mindful of, and I think there'll be more discussion as we get to that, the zoning changes. So thank you to everybody.
Thank you, Council Lucky. Council Schnepp, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to all who came tonight or participated in our Zoom public comment. And I have a little bit different take on the question of the virtual versus the live meetings. And Ms. Cronin, thank you for starting that conversation, and Ms. Elmer for seconding it. As a person who represents a far western district precinct, I know that sometimes it's a little bit more challenging for folks who don't live in Hyannis to actually get to Town Hall, especially for evening meetings. That's Town Council. Obviously, for some of our other meetings, Planning Board, ZBA, there are some advantages to being in person, but I also see that if we could actually move to a very healthy hybrid that might serve both, both needs. It may be taken out of our hands by the end of March. The legislature has, again, to review whether open meeting law will continue with allowing us in virtual meetings. So stay tuned to see whether, you know, everything just goes back to normal, or whether we're going to continue to explore different ways to having our meetings. So thank you.
Thank you for that. I appreciate the input in regards to that. Just to piggyback on that as well, in no way, shape, or form are we ever trying to exclude anybody from participating in a meeting. It was actually decided prior to even me becoming, when Councilor, President Hebert was president, it was decided that it would be up to the chairs to decide of their committees if they were going to participate in Zoom and coming out of that or in person when that time came. Now, that time did come when I was president, and I continued with that policy that we would keep it up to the, leave it up to the chairs to decide if they wanted to keep their meeting Zoom or be in person. Then we also worked here at the town council level to work towards doing a hybrid method. Now, we have been successful with that, as you witnessed. Not that it's easy, and there have been some growing pains within that. However, because of those growing pains and the fact that it takes up a lot of staff hours, we've limited that hybrid just to the town council meetings at this point in time. Hence, you can see how it could work moving forward. Not to say that we won't expand that at some point in time, but again, these changes, as important as they are, need to be incremental. So with that, and again, thank you, Councilor Schnepp, for mentioning that this too shall pass, that it should be coming to an end. So that's a type of thing. In no way, shape, or form was it ever to be, it's actually, it was supposed to be, its goal is to be inclusive. That's why we're doing, and a lot of people that I've heard from who are economically, you know, who are working three jobs, who are immigrant communities, have participated, who are minorities, have participated because of the Zoom aspect, and they've figured out the ability to be able to go on their coffee break or after they put the kids to bed. And, but again, I understand, and we listen, and we understand, but this, again, it's important to tell, you know, both sides of the story in regards to that. So thank you. Council Shaughnessy, did you have a hand up? It was, thank you. Thank you very much. Madam Vice President.
So thank you, Laura and Irene, for coming tonight and sharing your thoughts. I am very frustrated by not being in person when it comes to huge projects like the dock side that really affects our precinct. When those are virtual meetings and two of the most vocal people in my precinct feel that they're shackled and can't comment, it really frustrates me, especially when I learn that it seems to be more of a convenience for board members, and then they can travel and still Zoom in. It's not fair to us, and I can't wait for March to be over and that we're all back in person, especially with regard to this project. It has a lot of, there's a lot of questions out there. There's a lot of public input that should be given, and I share your frustrations with that, and I've said so. And I'm sorry that that, that that meeting went that way. However, I am excited to say that we have the Ausnet meeting coming up that will be live, thanks to Dan Santos, who made it happen for us, which is good. So Monday night, we'll see you here at 6:00. I did want to ask the town manager to come up and explain a little bit about the water rates for Irene Elmer, just so that we're clear, we're all working with the same reality. Thank you.
Good evening, Markells, town manager. Couple of things. I know there was a question or a reference to us using Yarmouth water. We are not using Yarmouth water and are no longer connected or in need of that water. I'd encourage everybody to look at the APCC report that just came out on water quality. It's in a whole bunch of different areas, but one of them's water supply. Hyannis came up as excellent water because of the great work the Department of Public Works is doing on moving forward with nationally-recognized filtration systems and identification of some of the challenges we have, and we're trying to keep it as cost-effective as we can. If we move over to rates, the way it's structured, the water supply in Hyannis falls under the Department of Public Works Water Supply Division. It's an enterprise fund. We calculate rates based on total cost of providing the service. I mean, we knowingly in 2005 purchased a private company that had been run to the end-- I mean, we knowingly in 2005 purchased a private company that had been run to the end of its useful life and had poor water quality. Town of Barnstable stepped in and has corrected that. And so the Town Council from time to time has taken leadership in this area relevant to making decisions to allocate funds specifically for the Water Supply Division because we do recognize that Hyannis is not just the center of Barnstable. Hyannis is the center of the region. And so water quality is critical, especially in the water supply. So for example, the Town Council made the decision with the First Host Community Agreement relevant to the Vineyard Wind Landing to take all of that money and put it toward the Hyannis Water System. And that's being done because we're receiving those payments, and that comes in, and that's where those funds go. Future decisions will be made. We're trying to mitigate rates, and we will continue to do the best we can, but our scope is broadening. You know, I said that it is the Department of Public Works Water Supply Division. We look townwide at water resources. We work with all of our districts and manage the water supply in Hyannis. So much of our investigation isn't just in Hyannis. It is throughout the community. And you'll hear us talk more and more about that. And even look at the composure perhaps of the board that is advisory to Town Manager relevant to that specific operation. So I hope that answers your question, Vice President.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page about the water being an enterprise fund and that we have contributions that are made from deals like Vineyard Wind that come in to mitigate the cost to Hyannis repairs. I just wanted to make sure everybody knows that and that it's on the record. Can you tell us where we can find that report about the water quality that you just mentioned?
There's various reports out there. The APCC report is on the APCC website. It's their 2022 Water Quality Report. Talks about bays. It talks about ponds and lakes. It talks about water supplies. It talks about water resources in general.
Okay, so thank you.
Go right in, go into water supply, and you'll see that recognition.
So much to read about.
Very proud of it, considering, you know, Hyannis, because of its urban nature, has been tested to a far greater degree than all the other water supplies, which really just started having to test for emerging contaminants in 2021. So, you know, we were way out ahead. We were able to address the problems, and we're in a very good position right now. So again, thank you, Public Works Department. Thank you, Council, for your leadership. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. I did take a tour of the water treatment facility in Hyannis, and it's unbelievable how state-of-the-art that is. If you get an opportunity, I recommend that. And I just wanted to point out one other thing for Mr. Diaz, who spoke, Scott Diaz, about erasing neighborhoods. It's abundantly clear what happens, and we do have those examples that you mentioned on Willow Street and again, where the Mazda dealership is now on North Street. And, you know, I for one, and I know many of the councillors who've sat with me on this dais, we've gone around and around Rezone 28 and West Main Street. And I think the prevailing thought is that we are against erasing neighborhoods. I remember a million amendments and a few very, very long nights where, you know, we hashed some stuff out and made some enemies and made some friends and decided that, in fact, neighborhood integrity was more important than widening roads and moving commercial properties. So I do really appreciate the comments, though they were very clear and very well thought out. So thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Any other counsel comment? I also just want to just discuss too that, you know, we talked about not only water, but fire services, things of that nature. We have a very unique setup here in the Town of Barnstable. We have five fire districts. They are their own quasi-government, and they are not required to share resources. So they tax on their own, and they, again, they're pretty much their own quasi-government outside of the Town of Barnstable. I encourage you to attend whatever village you're in, or you can attend other villages' meetings, but that is quite honestly outside of our purview. So, but again, I understand the conflict in regards to that. Also to Ms. Cronin and the comments in regards to the meetings, you know, the intention obviously isn't to have these meetings and have this availability for convenience of members of the boards, committees, or commissions. So I will reach out to the chairs to see if what they're doing is absolutely necessary at this point in time and if they could possibly move. Or even there's some committees that alternate every other meeting, that type of thing, whatever's possible, I should say, but I would encourage them to make that happen. So I just wanted to make sure you knew you heard. You're welcome. Any other comment from any councillors before I close public comment? Okay, that would be that. So appreciate everybody, again, participating in that, councillors. And that would be time normally for Town Manager Communications, but I am going to ask, and I've already spoken with the Town Manager, his comments are online, his report is online. You can read it there, but we have a lot coming on the agenda. And at this point in time, I'm going to bypass the Town Manager Communications being written. So, Madam Vice President, if you could please help me act on the minutes?
Yes, I'd like to move that we accept the minutes of January 19th, 2023, as written.
Second.
First and second. Any discussion? Okay, not seeing any. If you could show your approval by raising your hand and saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And one abstention from Counseline Eary. Thank you very much. It is now time for communications from elected officials, boards, committees, staff, commission reports, correspondence, and announcements from councillors. Anybody? Counsel Schnett, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to announce that the newly configured Appointments Committee met this week on Tuesday, and we had two important tasks. And one was to elect a chair, and I was honored to be elected such. And then the second was to determine our meeting schedule. We are going to move the Appointments Meeting from the third Tuesday to the second Tuesday of the month, and that will allow us to provide a slate of appointments that can be then read at our second council meeting of the month. So that should take care of that issue. And I just want to let the public know that current vacancies are listed on the Town Council page of our town's website and that in June of this year, there'll be a number of vacancies that will be created because certain terms will be filled. Generally, we look at if people want to be reappointed, but those are actually considered vacancies. So please look at the website, and if something is of interest to you, please submit an application. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Schnett. Thank you for all that are observing on the Appointments Committee, and thank you for taking on the charges, Chair. Much appreciated. Thank you. Any other announcements? Okay, at this point in time, this would be a time to take a quick five-minute break, and when we return back, and start the orders of the day. Thank you.
If you're going to find our seats, please, we'll resume with our Town Council meeting.
If you all be able to find our seats, please, we'll resume with our town council meeting. Like welcome everybody back. Oh, hold on. I need to tell Channel eighteen, get permission, hold on. Again, once again, thank you for being with us. Barnstable Town Council Meeting, February 2nd, 2023. We're going to start our orders of the day, and I'm going to take one item of new business out of order, just to move on, and Director Santos doesn't have to be here all night. Item number two, twenty twenty-three dash zero seven-two, Madam Vice Chair, if you could read it into the record, please.
Yes, item twenty twenty-three dash zero seven-two, authorization to expend a fiscal year twenty twenty-three grant from the Massachusetts Department of Fish and Game, Division of Marine Fisheries, in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars for repairs to the Blishpoint Boat Ramp in the town of Barnstable. This may be acted upon with a majority vote.
Second.
Welcome Director Santos.
Good evening, Mr. President, Madam Vice President, councilors, Dan Santos, Director of Public Works. The town of Barnstable was awarded a twenty-five thousand dollar grant to repair the Blishpoint Boat Ramp in Barnstable Harbor. The boat ramp has significant potholes and other damage that poses safety and operational hazards, and which, if left uncorrected, will accelerate deterioration of the ramp. This is a state-owned boat ramp, which is operated and maintained by the town. The Mass Department of Fish and Game has informed us of their intent to reconstruct the Blishpoint Boat Ramp in approximately five years. The repairs proposed at this time are intended to extend the useful life of the boat ramp until it can be reconstructed. A local match is not required, however, if the cost of repairing the boat ramp exceeds, the grant amount and the town will be responsible for funding the amount over the twenty-five thousand dollar grant. At this time, it is our aim to complete the project within the grant amount. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Santos, for the rationale. Any council discussion? Okay, I'm sorry, yes, Councilor Starr, please.
Thank you, Mr. Santos. Are you going to do the work this winter? Is that...
Mostly in the spring, because we need to do some asphalt repairs, and we want to make sure we have the plants are available. The warmer weather is more conducive to proper repairs.
Okay, so it's just basically the surface?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Starr. Any other questions for Director Santos? Okay, this is a majority vote. If you could show your approval by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? It passes. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Councilor Starr, you have a question?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Can we move up some of these other, these other two, the community preservation historic? I'm just thinking this zoning thing, we've got a few individuals out there.
Who always are here late at night. Sure, I just obviously like to get the requests prior to the meeting, but that's okay. Yes, I understand. I just need to let the, I will consider things in the future. It's just that I need to let the town clerk know and things of that nature, so we can organize minutes, and exactly what items and who they belong to and things of that nature, so, but I do appreciate the request. And I actually would ask too, when you have the microphone on, if you could just get a little closer to the mic, like I am here, so that people can hear you and ask the question, so, thank you. Okay, moving on, do any councils have certain announcements to make before we move forward with the first item of old business?
Yes, Mr. President, I will be recusing myself from item number twenty twenty-two dash one four-four, twenty twenty-two dash one four-five, and twenty twenty-two dash one four-six, and I will be leaving the dais.
Thank you, Councilon Eary. Council Rapo Cetti, please.
Mr. President, I will be recusing myself from item twenty twenty-two one four-four and item twenty twenty-two one four-five, and will be leaving the dais.
Thank you, Council Rapo Cetti.
President Levesque, I'll be recusing myself from item number twenty twenty-two dash one four-four and item number twenty twenty-two dash one four-five. I will be leaving the dais.
Thank you, Council Hatzlis. Councilor Shana Zee, please.
President Levesque, I just want to acknowledge, as though, although I have recused myself from these following two items in the past, after consulting with the State Ethics Commission, I was determined I do not have a conflict. I have, however, filed notice of appearance of a conflict with our town clerk.
Thank you, Councilor Shana Zee.
So I will not be recusing myself.
Thank you. Thank you for being with us. Okay, any other announcements? Okay, that being said, Council Mendez, please, if you could, read into the record, open public hearing for item number twenty twenty-two dash one four-four.
Thank you, President Levesque. This is item number twenty twenty-two dash one four-four, it's old business. Amending the Code of the Town of Barnstable, Part One, General Ordinance, Chapter two forty, zoning by repealing the zoning districts known as the Hyannis Village Zoning Districts, replacing them with revised and updated districts collectively known as the Downtown Hyannis Zoning Districts. It's a public hearing, roll call two-thirds council.
Second.
We have a first and a second. And we have our planning department here for the rationale.
Thank you so much. President Levesque, so great to finally be here to present item number twenty twenty-two one four-four, which is a comprehensive revision to the Downtown Hyannis Zoning Districts. As noted, there are three accompanying items tonight. One four-four and, one four-five and one four-six are essentially codependent cleanup items on that, but we will start with one four-four, which is a zoning text amendment, as well as a zoning map amendment, the study area of which is what is referred to in the zoning ordinance as the Downtown Hyannis Zoning Districts, but is also concurrent with the regulatory boundary that we commonly refer to as the Downtown Hyannis Growth Incentive Zone. This proposal was brought forward by council and was considered by the Planning Board, sorry, at a public hearing. I have the Planning Board report here that I'll note I will formally enter into the record. The Planning Board considered these amendments at a public hearing and voted unanimously to forward them to town council. Thank you, that's the Planning Board report to the town clerk. And again, they come here after several, after several public comment sessions, as well as that vetting at Planning Board here tonight. These are the official maps. We wanted to make sure we showed these for the record, but we do have a, we do have some exhibit maps that we'll walk you through as well. So the purpose of these zoning amendments are, in short, to promote mixed-use and multifamily housing development in the Downtown Hyannis area, while at the same time ensuring that we are protecting, not just protecting, but protecting and enhancing the area's historic and maritime character. The enhanced, the enhanced dimensional standards in the ordinance, which we typically refer to as form-based code standards, are designed to improve the urban fabric of Downtown Hyannis in a manner consistent with the traditional development patterns that exist here. This comprehensive revision to the zoning districts is well-supported in existing plans and policies that we have adopted in the town of Barnstable. The twenty eighteen Downtown Hyannis Growth Incentive Zone Plan specifically addresses adopting, amending, and revising the zoning to promote those objectives. The twenty sixteen Housing Production Plan, the Town Council Strategic Plan, and our local, twenty-ten Local Comprehensive Plan. Specifically, our twenty sixteen Housing Production Plan calls for allowing increased density for mixed-use multi-unit development in the Hyannis Growth Incentive Zone, and notes that amending zoning is the way to achieve these housing goals. The Town Council Strategic Plan speaks specifically to encouraging new growth opportunities in downtown, but specifically in a way where we're targeting the redevelopment of underperforming properties and underutilized properties, which we know we see many of on Hyannis Main Street. And targeting new growth to Downtown Hyannis and Hyannis Main Street is also emphasizing environmental protection while ensuring economic development as associated in our regional planning process. We also hope that these amendments meet the Town Council Strategic Plan goal of efficient, customer-friendly, and a predictable regulatory process. So just a little bit about the Hyannis Growth Incentive Zone, and I think this is incredibly important when we talk about some of the public comments that we've heard, not just tonight already, but through our public, through our public process. The Downtown Hyannis Growth Incentive Zone was originally established in two thousand and six to direct new investment and new growth, new development into this area that you see defined on your screen, the Downtown Hyannis Growth Incentive Zone, because it has, it has infrastructure, it has community activity, and thus redirecting growth away from areas with sensitive natural resources and critical resource value. So this is a, this is a critical part of our overall town-wide smart growth strategy. And it's also important to remember that it is not just about growth and development, it is about comprehensive planning for downtown, not just, not just planning for housing, not just planning for private investment, but really thinking about all of the public infrastructure, our open spaces, our historic preservation, and really thinking about how to put all these building blocks together to create a vibrant, walkable, and sustainable place at the heart of Cape Cod. Additional benefits of rezoning and encouraging housing downtown is this concept of revitalization through housing. We have many loyal local and small businesses on Hyannis Main Street. It is a hallmark. It's what makes it an authentic place, not just for our residents to come and visit, but for, for our visitors to come from, from all over the world. So bringing new residents, literally putting them on top of existing businesses, shows our support for that business community and, and the institutions that are at work downtown. Again, streamlining, streamlining our permit process is a significant incentive for property owners to invest in redevelopment and infill opportunities downtown. We have to, we have to zone for what we want downtown. We can no longer, we can no longer keep the cumbersome permit processes that we have in place and expect people to put investment in our community with the many other barriers that exist to investment today. We started this process a long time ago, thinking not about, not about zoning, but about planning and design. We partnered with Cape Cod Commission, who worked in three or four communities across the Cape in twenty eighteen, and participated in a process that they called Community Resilience by Design, which really sought to answer the question, how do we increase housing densities in certain areas of our community, but still maintain that community character and those traditional neighborhood patterns? So this was the, the process that we went through. Again, how do we encourage these, these missing middle housing types? And this is what they laid out for us. Where, again, these strategies, infilling, underutilized lots. You know, we specifically focused on the east end in that, in this process, thinking about places where we have surface parking lots that create what we call missing teeth in our urban fabric, places where you really feel that streetscape breaks down. Redeveloping underutilized property, again, a key, a key goal in our Town Council Strategic Plan. New buildings can reinforce historic patterns, it can enhance our pedestrian experience, and with development of these come new spaces and amenities that help recreate neighborhoods that once stood here. Retrofitting existing structures, it was a, it has been a very longstanding goal of the town to promote top-of-the-shop housing in Downtown Hyannis, and it has happened extremely rarely. So this is, again, a way where you, we can work within the existing building footprints, reutilize our historic structures to help encourage, again, housing and economic activity downtown. And this is, you know, this is one that has really come to light since COVID, the ability to convert underutilized buildings, you know, specifically those that were formerly used as office space to housing. There are limitations in our code, the way it's written, to doing that today. We have seen a lot of interest in our community, and it's just not a development type that's welcomed by our existing zoning. So these are our seven new zoning districts. I think I will turn it over to Senior Planner Jim Cutford to walk you through.
Welcome.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Thank you, Town Council. One cleanup item, if I may, Mr. President. The Planning Board recommended approval of TC two zero two-two one four-four as entered into the record by, by Director Jenkins. Town attorney asked me to restate that. So as Director Jenkins mentioned, there's been a lot of planning that has gone on for Downtown Hyannis. It's important to note that we're talking about specifically Downtown Hyannis, our Growth Incentive Zone. This isn't a project, a plan for anywhere Barnstable. This is specifically Downtown Hyannis and getting the best out of what we have today through the tools that Elizabeth just mentioned. We are doing this in our Growth Incentive Zone through seven new zoning districts, essentially realigning some of the districts that we have today. We're doing it in two methods. One is what we call our Form-Based Districts. Those are our two districts there, Downtown Main Street and Downtown Village. And the other is what we call our Hybrid Zoning Districts. Those five there, those have some nuances of the Form-Based zoning, but really it focuses on our traditional patterns with some, some, some new enhancements in terms of landscaping and others, and I'll go through those briefly. So before we get into that, we collaborated with, with our team at UTIL and Dan Barman from Zoning and Policy Development that helped us get to this point, putting together all of our policy plans and planning initiatives to get to where we are today. And with that, we have two Form-Based Districts and Hybrid Districts. The Hybrid Zoning Districts are five, are five different ones, and they outskirts the, the main spine of our Growth Incentive Zone. The one Downtown Neighborhood District are very distinct neighborhoods within our Growth Incentive Zone that has traditional use and form, that characterize more of the semi-attached and, and fully detached, smaller residential structures. And so those are kept in the traditional patterns through this Downtown Neighborhood District. There are some enhancements to landscaping, parking, but in, in terms of form, they remain traditional and, and in an attempt to preserve that historic footprint there. Secondly, we have the Hyannis Harbor Zoning District. This more or less remains untouched. There's, there has been discussion about future planning initiatives for the, the Harbor District. But for this, again, it's, it's merely, well, not merely, I should say, landscaping improvements, again, parking improvements, and some cleanup on, on use, on the use category you see in the, in the use chart. The Highway Commercial District, this lays out more traditional patterns for larger commercial opportunities. This actually combines our two districts of the Hyannis Gateway and the, the Highway Business District. So that, that kind of lines our northernmost district of the Growth Incentive Zone. And again, really relays more of the pattern for, of those larger commercials that you see there today. The Transportation Center, again, focuses on the transportation uses that are there, and, and the fact that it's not presentable from the, the public way. It adds some incentives for landscaping again and, and other amenities. But again, it doesn't go into the, the full Form-Based that we'll get to in a moment here. And lastly, the Downtown Historic, or Hospital District, we worked in collaboration with the hospital to make sure that, you know, all the modern amenities that a hospital would need would still be allowed. It allows for what's there today as well. Now going into the meat of it, the more, in my opinion, the more exciting part of this is the Form-Based Districts. Our Downtown Main Street and our Downtown Village. Our Downtown Main Street, while stating just Main Street, also includes our gateway to the Main Street. So that's Barnstable Road as well. That's important to note as we look through our, our Form-Based procedures and, and amenities that come with it. Downtown Main Street promotes a continuation of a walkable, pedestrian-oriented downtown, and, and really produces an active streetscape, you know, creates that human scale and welcomes pedestrians to our Main Street and, and Barnstable Road, hopefully, that where we don't have today. Specifically Barnstable Road, right now, what we have is a continued pattern of traditional development that, that really puts parking first. And what we would love to see, and what I think this tool will help create, is that active gateway to Downtown Hyannis, allowing for detail and architecture and, and, and development to come to the streetscape and interact with us as we're entering Downtown Hyannis, and putting the parking in the, in the back where we, we can Hyannis, and putting the parking in the, in the back where we, we can put it out of sight. The downtown Village District aligns around the, our Main Street and, and does similar growth patterns of form-based zoning, but this is really that tool of infill that Elizabeth was mentioning. This is our existing conditions on, in a, in a block on North Street. Again, a sea of parking, not welcoming to the pedestrian, and hopefully we can do a lot of great redevelopment and infill all along North Street and the surrounding area that's within this Village District to, again, create, create supportive housing for our, our businesses in downtown Hyannis, create welcoming, walkable community for all of us to enjoy, live, work, play. This is, and it's, an essential tool to get us there. So that's the big picture. What Kate's gonna do is get you into the, the real details of each one of this form base.
Thank you, Jim. So as Elizabeth has walked through the objectives of this zoning amendment, and Jim has walked through each of our zoning districts, I want to take a moment to take a step back and really talk about what does this proposed zoning do, and walk through five overarching benefits. The first being that this zoning enables a predictable form and enhanced character. It also supports increased housing production, something that we've certainly heard as a common comment from our public. It also greens our urban environment and emphasizes place over parking, and it produces a user-friendly ordinance. The proposed zoning maintains our conventional lot standards. I'll run through these quickly, so that's your minimum, your max front setback, your primary and secondary front setback, your side setback, as well as your rear setback. What this zoning does, it enhances our building standards. The first new provision is a facade build-out requirement, so this requires that our buildings occupy a minimum width of our lot as a ratio. It also requires a maximum number of stories, but what it further requires is a minimum and maximum height for each of our stories. So our ground story having the largest height, that's where we want to see our retail, commercial space, and then also has requirements for the minimum and max height for our upper stories. And this is important in maintaining an exist, a consistent form across our buildings. So when people say, what is form-based zoning, this graphic before you on the screen represents what form-based zoning is. It is focusing on form as opposed to land use, form being the principal organizing principle. Form-based zoning also, as I walk through these characteristic, these standards, emphasizes dimensional standards. By having consistent and emphasis on dimensional standards, it results in a predictable form. That's important, as Elizabeth touched on, the missing teeth. So as we're looking to infill and create new redevelopment downtown, we want to make sure that it has a predictable form, and that's what these lot standards and building standards ensure. Looking at the two districts, our form-based districts right at the core of downtown, with those, with those districts, you can go up to three and a half to four stories max, but what's important is with the fourth story, we have required that you have a recessed on that fourth story, a minimum of eight feet, so that from the street level limits your visibility of that fourth story, and it also can serve as a functional purpose as a balcony on that fourth story. There's several, this code emphasizes several building components, like these great designs that I'm just gonna walk through. And it also requires frontage types, so how the building meets our streetscape. And I'll hand it over to Elizabeth.
Thank you, Kate. I just wanted to take a minute and just talk about some of the challenges to housing production that are in our code currently. When the Growth Incentive Zone was created in 2006, it was projected, within the first 10 years of the Growth Incentive Zone, that it would support 598 new residential units and over 580,000 fi- square feet of commercial space. In the following year, in the following 10 years after that Growth Incentive Zone was adopted, only 104 residential units were produced downtown, and in the resulting five years, there were an additional 136, but 65 of those were through a regulatory agreement process, a flexible but cumbersome process, requiring both Planning Board and Town Council approval for the type of development, I think, in the most part, that we all agree that we want to see and encourage downtown. The, the land use patterns in downtown themselves present a challenge to housing production, especially on the outskirts of Main Street here. You can see that the land use is dominated by auto, an auto orientation, a, a broken-down streetscape, again, with parking in front of building type and large surface parking lots. But the flip side of this opportu- is it does give us the opportunity to be able to rebuild and infill where there are underutilized uses. Currently, our zoning standards regulate through a metric of units per acre, and, and that is, again, a very limiting factor. When you look at our land, you, when you look at our lot sizes downtown, many of our lot sizes downtown are between four and 10,000 square feet. The vast majority of our properties downtown don't have an acre. So if you're only permitting four units per acre, eight units per acre, you're highly constraining the reuse of existing property. And that's why, again, the form-based code allows us to move away from that units-per-acre metric and really think about how you balance the building on the lot, the parking on the lot, and the landscaping on the lot to create a more cohesive development style. So previously, when we started the Growth Incentive Zone, we had 14 different zoning districts. They were made more cohesive in the last round of update to, to the downtown Hyannis Growth Incentive Zone, and they were distilled into seven. And again, we feel like this is the next step forward in terms of modernizing a tool. I like to think of zoning as sort of a tool and as a technology that you constantly need to revisit in accordance with market conditions, in accordance with public input, to make sure it is getting you where you want to go. So again, these, these, these changes are aimed at directing new investment, again, into infrastructure, into areas with infrastructure, moving away, again, from that units-per-acre metric. By allowing, by allowing smaller-scale units with less parking, we're essentially, we're promoting more inherent housing affordability. There are so, there are, you know, land costs are at the core of, of, you know, what it takes to build, what it takes to build new residential development. So when you're requiring too much parking in accordance with new residential development, you're driving up the costs of that construction. And again, the form-based code allows for, again, not, not just focused on developit- development, but hoping to, to bet, to build a walkable environment, a sustainable environment where people are less auto-dependent and, and have all of those resulting benefits. So Kate's gonna talk a little bit more about some of the enhanced landscape standards that you see in the code.
Thank you, Elizabeth. So in our current zone, there are existing requirements for landscape buffers. However, there's no specification for how those landscape buffers are populated. Often, the code says that those landscape buffers need to be enhanced with shrubs or trees, but there's no specification. With this proposed zoning, we're looking to enhance that. We're looking to, the proposed zoning incorporates provisions for specifications for plant material over 50 linear feet to produce what you've seen on the screen with a consistent form of plant vegetation that's dense and diverse. Furthermore, within those specifications for the plant material across that linear feet, there's different scale of plants. So we go from canopy trees all the way down to small shrubs, to make sure that there's a diverse representation of plants within those buffers. There's also specifications for the size of the plants at install, as well as mature height, to make sure that we are really populating our built environment and also balancing it with our environmental, natural environment. So the rendering before you on the screen represents the general submission of developers with the current landscape standards, with the landscape buffers, but no specification for buffers, so they're often sparsely developed with trees. With the proposed requirements, now you see that pattern, that rhythm, that dense and diverse plant vegetation, which we want to see in our urban environment. And so, I'm sorry, I forgot one last point. So beyond just enhancing screening and adding this beautiful aesthetic perspective with adding these trees, it's also enhancing sustainability. This includes, but not limits, adding trees and vegetation enhances air quality, it also helps us to manage our stormwater, and it, it helps us to cool areas. So when we think about urban heat impacts in the parking lots, adding all these trees on the outskirts, as well as the interior in our islands, helps to cool the area, as well as the building itself. So there's a lot of benefits to structuring how we want our buffers to be populated, both for the built and the natural environment.
No, thank you, Kate. I'm glad Kate added that last part, because, again, I go back to, this is about downtown Hyannis and urban heat and, and new trees is, I think, critical to, again, making this place a great place for all of us to live, work, play. So that's a, that's a critical item. This, this slide title really encapsulates the next step here, emphasizing place over parking. We're, we're doing minimum parking standards, but we're incorporating these shared uses. So it more closely aligns with the needs of the uses of today and incentivizes shared parking so that we're all, we're all playing together and, and trying to utilize the parking more efficiently than what we have out there today. It also gets, gets away from some of these rigid metrics that we have, and again, promotes shared space, not just for parking, but also open space. So again, so this is our traditional developments, I always go back to what we see every so often, you know, lots of parking out front, large setbacks, and really what we're looking to do here is, as I think we're, we're, we're getting our point across here, bringing it to the, to the street, really activating our sidewalks and putting that, that parking in the rear, and hopefully bringing the, the tool to developers, business owners, property owners, that now we can, we can have shared space, shared parking, shared open space, have active first-floor commercials, supporting our, our businesses, and bringing some new life down to downtown Hyannis. Lastly, I will say, this might seem like a cleanup, but user-friendly ordinance goes beyond just, just developers looking into zoning. It really show, provides transparency to the public. Zoning can be a, a different language for people. So providing a helpful zoning chart that's easy to use, I think is, is actually a huge step forward for this community, especially downtown Hyannis. And with the use chart, I do want to just mention, it's a, it's, we've adjusted it slightly with this proposal here, so that before you, these uses are broad use categories, and what, what you see in your, your use chart are broad use categories so that we can have diverse opportunities for, again, first-floor infill development of commercial with uses that are allowed by right, and then for specific uses that, you know, are maybe thoroughly car-dependent, such as, you know, we always deal with drive-throughs, let's say. Those are called out on that use chart so that, you know, they're either prohibited or it's a special permit. So I, this use chart is, is modernized for, for the community and specifically for downtown Hyannis, and I think Elizabeth will be closing us out.
Thank you, Jim. So just in conclus- in conclusion, and I apologize, they're a little bit washed out here on your screen, but hopefully, hopefully councilors can see them and you can see them, the public can see them at home. Are, are some renderings about, that represent what we think the street could look like with additional infill development, but what I think this does not show you is the overall planning and investment framework that the town of Barnstable has in place in downtown Hyannis. Encouraging private investment, encouraging housing, encouraging the redevelopment of underutilized private property is just one building block in terms of our overall downtown revitalization strategy. I think, you know, I think you know that we're thinking really comprehensively about our transportation system and our streetscape downtown, different mobility options to get a wide diversity of people around downtown. We support a local historic district commission that thinks about the protection and preservation of our historic properties, and we're updating our design guidelines associated with this zoning. We're investing in our public spaces, starting with a Hyannis Village Green, to make sure that they are welcoming and active spaces that are visited, visitors and our new residents on Cape Cod that we hope to call, that we hope call Hyannis Main Street home can come and enjoy. So we think this is a great foundation to build the next, the next steps on Hyannis Main Street on, but please recognize that this is one piece in a larger investment framework that the town of Barnstable has in Hyannis to create, again, a great, walkable, authentic place for everybody to enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Jenkins. Appreciate that. Now it is time for a public comment. So would anybody like to make public comment? Anybody? Yeah, I think the public hearing's already been opened, yeah, from the beginning, yep.
Wrote my own pen.
Guaranteed that the ink works, right?
Guaranteed, right here. Thank you. I think I'm the only person in the room with a mask on. Can you hear me all right?
We can hear you just fine, just, but we know who you are, but just in case the public doesn't know because of the mask.
Felicia Pen from Hyannis.
Thank you very much.
I did send a memo in on January 5th. I don't know if you all read it or not, but I talked about insurances that I wanted to make sure happened here, and I just wanted to share that with the public, I guess. I just want to assure that downtown Hyannis has a healthy balance of greenery and built structures. The people who live here, who I've talked to in the supermarket and elsewhere, don't want to live in a city, and they want to retain a village environment. I think I mentioned to you that a four-story building, I didn't think that the eight-foot setback was sufficient, I still don't think so, especially for letting light in from, and the view from across the street. Nobody's worried about looking straight up from a sidewalk because you can't see much beyond doing that, but from across the street, eight feet doesn't do enough to push that fourth story back. I understand that the standard is seven feet in other communities, but most of those are suburbs of Boston, and they're incorporated as cities, and we're not a city, we're a village in the town, and we don't want to look like suburb of Boston. I want to assure that the architectural features of any new development echoes the architectural elements of the neighborhood it's building in. I don't know if the Design Infrastructure Plan will define this, but it should be articulated in the zoning package if and when possible. It's really important that whatever new gets built reflects everything else around it, so it doesn't stick out like a sore thumb. But my biggest concern, and I heard a lot about this tonight, actually, is that the entire process will change for any development, and this is what's called, I guess, avoiding cumbersome. It's very obvious to me that developers had a big hand in writing this. No more will there be, the process changes entirely. So if somebody's building to code and they don't need an exception, which would result in a regulatory agreement, if they don't have to waive any zoning, they just go right to the building commissioner's site plan review, there's no public input, there's no stop at the planning board, there's nothing. It's just you get stamped, signed, sealed, delivered, see you later, bye. So I suggested at a meeting that I had with staff, that at a bare minimum, a butters should be notified. I suggested within 500 feet, that if there's gonna be a change and something's getting built, they should be notified that the site plan's gonna meet about this, and they can go to the meeting and they'll have the ability to comment. I think that's the most important thing we can do, because if this town equates cumbersome process with public input, we are running into a danger zone. process with public input, we are running into a danger zone. We need to be able to allow the public who are going to be affected by this to comment on a project. And if that's cumbersome, then so be it. That's the way it goes. Earlier tonight, we saw on the slides that the zoning protects our history of maritime character. I'd like to know how it does that. Didn't hear an explanation of how that happens. There was also enough, some information that was presented about how there wasn't enough housing built in the 10 years after the growth incentive zone came in. I just want to let you know that this town had an opportunity to encourage a mixed-use development, long time ago, transit-oriented development at the Transit Transportation Center. And the head of zoning at the time, the head of zoning, listen to me, the head of planning at the time blocked that project and it would have been, it's such a shame that that happened, that that occurred because it would have been one heck of a catalyst for the east end of revitalization of the east end of Main Street and it's exactly what you're looking for here. And it didn't make sense to me then and it doesn't make sense to me now. I shake my head every time I think about that, but there was only so much square footage available that the town could use at the time and I think that individual was afraid that that development was going to suck up all the square footage. That was the reason given when I asked a question anyway. Regarding infill and parking, I have major concerns. As you all know, I'm a parking freak. I have major, major concerns that, you know, anybody can build a building on an existing parking lot and call it infill, but then where do all those spaces that you built on, where do those people park? Because they're obviously parking on them now. Where do they go? I have major concerns of parking. I hope that you think a lot about that and that you leave your minds open to how you deal with the parking situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Penn. Any other public comment, public hearing? Okay. Now seeing any in the room, is there any remote, please?
Yes, there is. It'll just be one second. If I say that wrong, I apologize. You can unmute and you have three minutes.
Okay. Hello, my name is Natalia Froyes. I'm a resident in Hyannis for the last 24 years. My family has immigrated here from Brazil 24 years ago. So I have been living in Hyannis most of my life and I agree upon the redevelopment of downtown Hyannis to change the zoning to build more housing. As a young professional Cape, I have been struggling a lot on maintaining my lifestyle as a single mother due to the high increased rates of housing. Right now, I have chosen to live with my parents so we have three adult incomes in a house to sustain the upscale living in here and things need to be changed and hopefully with the new zoning, also it can put into place affordable housing for our workforce. Because if we continue to increase so much of the rate of rental and mortgage, the workforce, young professionals will leave the Cape and we are already struggling with filling up job positions here on the Cape due to the housing problem and we really need to think about the possibility to keep our generation, our new generation, young professionals on the Cape and housing needs, we need to address this issue. And I really believe on building the housing, making it affordable for our workforce so we can still have them here on the Cape. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Froyes. Have a great night. Appreciate you joining us.
Next for public comment is Stephen Robichaud. Stephen, you can unmute and you have three minutes.
Thank you so much, Sarah. Good evening. My name is Stephen Robichaud and I'm a resident of the Village of Barnstable. I serve on the Barnstable Planning Board and the Barnstable Community Preservation Committee. Thank you for the opportunity to offer public comment. First off, I just wanted to commend Elizabeth, Jim and Kate for that excellent presentation. I attended an informational meeting on this item and the item then came before the planning board as town council was seeking our recommendation. Our board unanimously sent a positive recommendation on the item to town council. Members, including myself, expressed excitement about this proposed change. I believe this zoning makes sense for the downtown area. This zoning will lead to diverse mixed-use development that will help revitalize the downtown area. The current regulatory process can be challenging for applicants to navigate and often projects are stalled or simply don't happen for a number of various reasons. An applicant for regulatory agreement must negotiate successfully with our planning board and then must obtain final approval from town council. This can be challenging for applicants to work through. This zoning change will open up by right mixed-use development for many of these types of projects that would otherwise have to seek a regulatory agreement. We all know there are various lots around the downtown area that are tired and in need of new life. This zoning will breathe life into these properties, breathe life into the downtown area and most importantly, this zoning will lead to the generation of housing units in the downtown area. Walking distance to the waterfront, to dining, to regional transportation, to employment, to shops, to museums, memorials, to recreation, et cetera. There are developers watching this meeting tonight, right now, hopeful for this change so that they can proceed by right and break ground on some wonderful projects around town that I know will positively impact our community and many of these projects include seriously impactful housing creation. Personally, I was impressed by the informational presentation on Form-Based Code. The presenter at one point was asked, what kind of case studies are there out there? I learned there are many. Barnstable would not be the first. Other towns have come before us and they are seeing the positive impacts already. We all have talked about and we all understand how critical the generation of housing units is for our community. Despite considerable amounts of money being directed at this housing problem, I don't feel we've made much headway. Personally, I'm very disappointed with our collective progress and that includes myself. In my opinion, this item before you tonight will change that. A vote in favor of this zoning change will directly lead to the generation of housing units in the downtown area. It will generate the energy and it will generate the momentum that we all desperately need. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. Thank you for considering my comments and thank you for your service to the town.
Thank you, Mr. Robichaud. Appreciate your time.
Next for public comment is Carolyn Farrell. Carolyn, you can unmute and you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Carolyn Farrell. We are residents of Hyannis. We actually live on South Street, so we are very interested in the redevelopment plan. One thing that Elizabeth touched on briefly was historic preservation, which is something that we're very interested in and I would like to see maybe on the town website, further elaboration of how properties in the historic district are going to be protected and/or Also, I wish there was some way of the town to help board it up buildings. There are several properties on, there's a property on Main Street, there's also a property on West Main Street that has lain fallow for the entire time we've lived here and I wish there was some way that the town could encourage those property owners either to develop the property or to sell. We also attended the Streets presentation last week and we found it to be extremely well-done, very professional and are in favor of having both Main Street and South Street become two-way streets. Thank you.
That's all we have for public comment at this time.
Thank you, Sarah. Appreciate it. Appreciate you filling in as well. Did a great job. Just one more shot and anybody else want to make a public comment regards to that? Okay. Now we move to council discussion and, yeah, at this time I would, I guess, I am going to close the public hearing, so this time we'll close the public hearing. Any other council discussion or I know, first of all, before we enter in discussion, I know there's a number of amendments out there. Each councillor has their amendment. I do request that each councillor would try to move the amendments in the order of how they're numbered. That would help us. So if you have an amendment to offer or if you have discussion, you'd like to, just please raise your hand and I will start with Council Lucky, please.
I have an amendment, but first I have some comments.
Please.
I want to go back to what Elizabeth spoke about, specifically working with Union Studio and the Cape Cod Commission with the community resilience by design. I've read the preponderance of the Cape Cod Commission reports. They produce a lot, they're beautiful, they're glossy. This one I particularly liked. I thought it was beautifully done and one of the reasons was it hit something very close to me, which is missing middle housing, which is housing that's done at a scale that mixes in with residential properties and it's beautifully done and they gave some stunning examples in there. The other thing I really liked about that project is they involved the public. They showed pictures and they asked for public response to those pictures and it was overwhelming response to those more residentially geared buildings and I think that's absolutely critical and I link that to what Felicia Penn has talked about, that without public involvement and support in this, then it really falls apart. We've had people from Hyannis speak. I like Felicia's idea of having some public involvement, of notifying the butters. I think it's absolutely critical to keep the public engaged in this. I can appreciate Mr. Robichaud's comments about getting those developers going, but there's a lot of trust involved with this, trust that we're going to be doing the right thing and I think that's essential and I don't know that trust always comes naturally and I think public involvement keeps trust at the forefront. The other thing about historic, people have mentioned that and that my amendment has something to do with that, that we keep the historic nature and I know Bruce Prescott sitting at the back of the room, he spoke earlier, he's one of our newer owners of a shop on Main Street and we had a wonderful conversation the other night. I still need to visit his shop. He has a shop in Rhode Island, one in Concord, New Hampshire, and now one here on Main Street and he's taken great care to renovate the building that he's in and I hope we see a mix of that. I hope we don't just see a lot of huge four-story development. That has a place, but I hope we don't have the monotony of that. We have some beautiful buildings. The gentleman spoke earlier about the AMP building. I would hope, you know, those kind of buildings would stay on Main Street. I think it's absolutely essential. So again, I'm just trying to tie some of this together and, you know, hit on that, that the public involvement is absolutely essential, trust is essential and developers, if we can trust them to do the right thing, then yes, let's not impede them and I think having these transparent processes is very important for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Lucky. I just have a quick question for our town attorney. When council makes comment or has a question regards to something, can they immediately make an amendment thereafter or do we have to go back? You know what I mean? I know Mason's rules, I'm not sure if...
I do have a quick question.
Okay, just making sure, clarify that. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Anything further, Council Lucky?
No, I do have the amendment, but I thought we were making comments first and then amendments.
It's an open, we can have discussion, it can be interspersed. The only request that I had was that the items, the amendments go in order, that's all.
Okay.
So you still have the floor if you'd like it or if you'd like to wait, you can do that too.
Well, I do have the first amendment, but I'd like to wait for all the comments. I think that would be more effective.
That's fine, no problem. I just wanted to give that opportunity.
Okay.
You're welcome. Council Snap, did you have a comment?
Yes, I actually have a question.
That's great.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a very impressive effort and document and your presentation really did bring to light the reasons why we're doing this and probably why it's taken this long to get here and because I know there's even, even in the last year when we've had a lot of delays and trying to get this meeting, there's been some conversations and some modifications which will be shown by the amendments tonight. I just had kind of a technical question because this is a major zoning change. Will there be any current uses that are considered grandfathered and if so, what will be the impact if there's, you know, you were moving into so many by rights, but is it possible that we wouldn't get some of the benefits that this zoning change has in terms of some of the design features and landscaping because a current owner doesn't have to abide by it?
Thank you, Consular Snap, Elizabeth Jenkins, Director of Planning and Development. When we crafted, speaking to use first, so there's, I think, use and then site standards and I believe your question encompassed both. Speaking to use, I think we were thoughtful about trying to not take away any rights that property owners had today to do uses on their property. There are a range of prohibited uses that are in the zoning code today that we carried forward and you see those displayed in the use table. You know, a good example of this is one that came up earlier in the evening, which is car dealership, for example. So that's a use that is not permitted, has not been permitted in our code since 2006, but they have vested rights under zoning. If they were established lawfully, the owners are allowed to reinvest in those uses. So yes, they will still, they will still exist today. They still have rights under the way Massachusetts zoning works to continue as they do everywhere. But again, we hope that by opening up opportunities for a wider array of investment in those properties, we move towards more conforming uses in the district. Non-conforming site standards work much the same way if there are conditions where properties don't conform, say, to landscaping requirements. There may be cases where they're allowed to maintain those under certain circumstances, but we were thoughtful about carrying forward the provisions in our code today that essentially require major redevelopment and reinvestment in that property to bring that property all the way up to the standards that are in today's code. So yes, every time we do a development review, we have to be thoughtful about what's vested. There are a number of provisions in the code that we hope will bring properties towards compliance.
Okay. Could you cite an example of where it might not be triggered versus when it might be triggered?
So, you know, one we talk a lot about is parking lots. So I think this is the biggest one in the code. So there are parking lots. I think the full-scale redevelopment of a parking lot only kicks in when that parking lot has 20 or more spaces and you're adding five more spaces to that parking lot. So if you're doing a small-scale redevelopment, you may not have to completely redevelop that. The interiors of that parking lot, you may still have to redevelop your frontage, your frontage, for example, but essentially as development scales up, the more, the more compliance and requirements you have today. So, you know, another example is if you're going to build in addition to that property, essentially any new additions have to come into compliance, so, you know, with the code, but you would still have the ability, say, if you were building up, to maintain those existing setbacks. existing setbacks.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Council Snap. Any other counsel clerk, please?
Thank you very much, President Levesque. Can we have staff address the concerns of Ms. Penn regarding parking in general in this area and the effects to parking, given the more intense development? Thank you.
I'd be happy to speak to that. So overall, what the proposed zoning amendments represent are a reduction in parking requirements to new uses and intensification of uses that come into downtown Hyannis. So we are scaling back the amount of required parking that new development must adhere to. But we have over 14,000 parking spaces in downtown Hyannis, and I would challenge that most of those are occupied most of the time. It is our primary land use in downtown Hyannis is surface parking lots. So when we say we need to start prioritizing place over parking, a big step there is to start thinking about how to, again, right-size those parking lots based on the development that's being presented and allow uses, you know, to sort of de-stigmatize sharing parking between neighbors and between different land uses. So one of the things that the code does is, you know, allow essentially credit, by right credit, for a mix of uses that have, you know, different peak hours of parking demand. You know, it's certainly not a new concept in zoning, but it's one that we only allow under very specific circumstances in our code. We do anticipate an amendment. I will note that in hearing comments from our public, we thought that the shared parking requirements in the table weren't entirely clear. So we do hope to offer an amendment on that tonight. But, you know, this also goes to, I think, the overall planning strategy and revitalization strategy that we have downtown is not to create a downtown where people who live here need to be auto-dependent. We certainly recognize that people have cars. But we also know that new generations, that people who are aging in place have fewer and fewer automobiles per household. So by enhancing our walkable environment, by, you know, working with our regional transit authority, by adding safe bike lanes into our downtown, you know, these are all components of what we believe can create a more sustainable and less auto-oriented place downtown.
Thank you, Counsel Clark. Thank you, Director Jenkins. Counsel Mendez, please.
Thank you, President Levesque. Just more of a comment. First of all, I'd like to thank the staff for meeting tirelessly with several people to get this through. Change is hard, especially us who've been down here for generations. But without this change, our Main Street's going to die, period. People have to look at the big picture. If we don't give up a little bit of something what we want, we'll have nothing. We have several town departments that are short-staffed. The hospital's short-staffed. We need the housing. I have friends that can afford to stay here, but they can't find a place to stay. I have friends that would love to live on Main Street, but they can't find a place to stay. This isn't a perfect plan, but it's the best that we've had so far. And just like Mrs. Penn said, if they would have did something with the transportation thing years ago, maybe it wouldn't have gotten to this point. But that's in the rearview mirror. We have to look forward. And unfortunately, some people aren't going to like it. But it's the best that we have. And I think it's a wonderful plan. And I like to thank staff because it's very, very important to save our Main Street. Because if you look all across this country, all the old towns, just like Barnstable, have blighted Main Streets because of box stores, so on and so forth. We all know the story. So if we don't do this, we're going to fall victim to the same thing. So that's the choice in front of us. Either we grow as a town, or we try to stay pat and watch our town die. Congratulations, Elizabeth. Great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Mendez. Any other counsel comment? Vice President Cullen, please.
Yes. Fantastic presentation. Really challenging conversation and thoughts, you know? Because as Counselor Mendez mentioned, you know, we all, we love our village mentality and our provincial identity. But reality is that when the landing is done, Main Street is going to need a competitive edge. And the businesses that are on Main Street, having been a small business owner for years and gutting it out all winter long, I know that you depend on your local. And I love the idea of the above-the-shop housing. That's what I did when I owned the market, after all. And I love the symbiosis it creates, where you have an opportunity to build a new sort of neighborhood. And we get entrenched, I believe, in what we consider to be a perfect living experience. Mine is my little house on my acre of land, even though the backyard's flooded right now from all the rain. But it's my little house, my kid, my two dogs, and my big space, my greenhouse, my hot tub, my treehouse, all this stuff. But not everybody's living that way anymore. And we need to figure that out. We need to come to terms with that. So you can have your acre and your treehouse and your greenhouse and your hot tub and your big yard and your flowers and all that if you want it. But we need to have better and different options for a new generation of professionals because we're losing 1,000 families a year on Cape Cod. 1,000 families a year. And young professionals. I saw a thing on Facebook the other day that a teacher at Barnstable High School can't find a place to live, so she's going to leave. I mean, and who pays the ultimate price for this? Our children, their children pay the ultimate price. I was in a meeting once where things were really challenging with Deb Crowe. She was upset at the rhetoric going back and forth. And, you know, she always had very strong opinions that were really well-learned opinions. She spent her time doing her homework. And she threw her hands up, and she said, you know, "We can't keep saying no to everything." And it's really true. We have to be big enough to envision a future that might be different than the way we grew up. So I'm challenged by four stories. I'm challenged by the eight-foot setback. I'm thankful for the eight-foot setback. But it challenges me because I wouldn't necessarily want to live there. But that doesn't mean other people don't. I applaud the work. I know it's been really a yeoman's task. And I'm thankful that you guys, you know, brought it forward to us, and you're patient with us, with our, you know... But that's not the way I grew up mentality, you know? But the bottom line is we do need to modernize. We need to modernize, or we're not going to make it. So I just wanted to say those thoughts. Not an easy vote. Either way, that's for sure. But we do it with what we feel is best for our community in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Cullen. Any other counsel comment, discussion? I will also reiterate, it was an excellent presentation and a lot of work. And I've had a front-row seat to how much work has gone into this plan and the follow-up and moving forward and making sure we have the right number of counselors to be able to listen to this item and be able to, you know, vote on it. And there's just, again, and I appreciate the public coming out in regards to this, too, as well, in person and via Zoom. And so, again, kudos to everybody involved. It really is an excellent, you know, idea worthy of discussion. So, and, you know, I do have some quick questions, just to clarify something. My vision of what's happening here, and I think it's important for the public to understand, is that we are actually kind of controlling the hoops that people need to jump through. We're not necessarily rolling out a red carpet to anybody in particular, commercial developers or anything like that. We're actually making it more restrictive than what actually currently exists. And we're just, am I right in saying that, that that was the purpose of this?
You're correct. I mean, I strongly challenge the statement that this was written with strong developer input. We wrote this with an amazing team. Dan Bartman has an incredible amount of experience in municipal zoning. And the team at UTIL, they are architects and planners, and they do work on both sides of that coin. They work on the private sector. They understand what it takes to make a project market responsive. But we tried to balance that with what fits in downtown Hyannis. So again, there were, I think, a lot of conversations that we had throughout this process. They have written these types of codes in 12 to 14 other locations across the country. And we had a lot of locations about how Hyannis is different and Hyannis is unique. And our economy is here, our economy is different here, and our character is different here. And so, yes, I mean, I think this was very tailored to our local condition. And I think it was so much work because, again, not that we are seeking to exclude public input in any development process, but we wanted to enhance public input into the zoning upfront. Again, make sure that we have these incredibly detailed provisions about, you know, what a building looks like on a lot, what trees have to go into your landscape buffer. So our expectations about the high quality of development that we expect here in Hyannis are set upfront for anybody who is looking to come and invest here. That was one of the overriding goals of the zoning, was to set that bar high and set that expectation upfront for those who are looking to come here. You know, I also wanted to speak to the historic preservation piece. Ms. Farrell brought it up. We heard it here a couple of times tonight. You know, I do think that allowing people to build the way they built in the '30s and '40s, when Main Street was developed, you know, that you can't necessarily build under our code today, is bringing back that historic character. We are, you know, it is notable that we pair this district with a local historic district commission that has the ability to review projects that comes forward, that has the ability to stop demolition of historic property when it's not appropriate. So those are some of the tightest controls you can get over preserving historic buildings. And we're going to continue to work with them collaboratively over the next few months to make sure that the design guidelines that we update and apply to this are cohesive with our historic district guidelines. So again, that character, you know, we've talked a lot tonight about building form, but, you know, the next step is really thinking about, you know, the materials and the colors and all those sort of details that go into the richness of a place. That's the power of our historic district commission and design guidelines and having those things work together. So that is something that we're paying a lot of attention to as well.
Thank you. And just if you could speak to a couple. In fact, just, I think it was, I don't know if it was last evening, there was an item on the highest historic agenda that somebody's looking to build some, I think it was 51, Main Street, that they're looking to build. And the Hyannis Historic Commission said, "You need to wait. You need to go back and review." And we need a third-party review in regards to reviewing this item. Am I mis... Is anybody... Because honestly, I received a complaint in regards to it. So, you know, and so here we are, you know, maybe?
So, under the Hyannis Historic, we do have some representatives here. I don't believe there was anyone who... Well, there was a town project that is before the historic district commission that we... I mean, the commission, I'll give them credit. They do a great job looking at every single detail of an application. And yes, I mean, it may take multiple meetings in order for them to get to a favorable decision. But I think it's just the merit and the real leadership from that commission that they take their job serious and their role serious. And I think they'll play a big role in this moving forward as well.
Thank you. I just wanted to reiterate that they do dig down and make sure that if there is a historical significance, that they will pursue that and make sure that that's vetted properly. So thank you. Any other counselor? I'm sorry, Counsel Shawnee, please.
Thank you, President Levesque. One thing I wanted to bring up that, I guess Elisa Magnotta kind of touched on it in talking about Form-Based Code when she said that it provides predictability. You know, I would like to argue that it also provides a great deal of equity, you know, between the Zoning Board of Appeals, the Planning Board, all of our different commissions and committees. These are volunteers from the town. Their terms are staggered. These boards, committees, and commissions change all the time. But through that process, whether it's a regulatory agreement or an actual appeal to the ZBA, you know, depending on the board who's sitting, their, maybe their feelings about that particular developer, I think there can potentially be inequity or a chance where a developer comes forward and says, "Well, wait a minute. This other project was approved three years ago that is so substantially similar to mine, yet I'm in front of the present board, I'm getting shot down." So, you know, I would argue that there's a big equity piece to this, where it sort of levels the playing field. And I think that is important. You know, another thing I want to say about sort of mixed-use housing, where it's apartment style, it's commercial on the first floor, especially with regard to affordability. You know, a three-bedroom apartment, by its nature of being an apartment, is going to be more affordable than a three-bedroom, single-family home, assuming they're both comparable in other ways. So I do think, you know, particularly for people who are maybe coming down here to take jobs, coming from urban areas, that is the style of living that they're more used to. They're used to a denser style of living. I had to look up what the actual square footage of my lot was in Hyannis, single-family home. I have a 980-square-foot home sitting on a 2,600-acre lot. That's a .06 of an acre. Not at all uncommon in downtown Hyannis because there was subdividing that was allowed way back when, that would never be allowed now. I mean, I don't know what your setback is, Jim, but whenever you said the number, I sort of went, "What?" I mean, I can practically spit into my neighbor's bedroom from my bedroom window.
It's a double lot. It's a double lot.
That's right. That's how tight things are in downtown Hyannis. But, you know, my husband sort of migrated from a lovely neighborhood in West Jarmont to Hyannis. And the one thing he's said consistently since he's been here is how much he loves it. He just can't believe how much more convenient everything is. And I think that's attractive. It's attractive to senior citizens. It's attractive to young families, young professionals. I think it's attractive to, you know, even people, single-parent home. It's just that much more sort of feeling of support around you than you would have out in a subdivision in the middle of Marston's Mills, you know? I know it came up for me personally when I got divorced. My father was a little worried about being downtown Hyannis by myself. And he lives out by Sandy Neck. And I said, "Dad, at all times, there is a Barnstable police officer within 10 minutes or less of my home." Not true out off Sandy Neck Beach Road. So, you know, I think there's a lot of people who are attracted to that. And one thing I can say is, for the entirety of my life, North Street has looked the same. It's never been pretty. You know, Barnstable Road runs everything from the glorious A-frame from the early to mid-'60s to metal warehouse buildings. I mean, it's a hodgepodge. So, and that is a major corridor from 132 down to the Main Street District. It's not a pretty drive. You know, there's some very cute bungalows on the left side as you come down from the roadway, but other than that, it's a real mixed bag of architecture. And it would be nice to see that sort of pulled together a little more cohesively. So I, for one, am in support of the changes. Thanks.
Thank you, Counsel Shawnee. Any other counsel? Counsel Cusack, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Quick question for you, Director Jenkins. I think, Jim, you might have underscored this. Let's say there's some success in this general direction. What do you feel in regards to the exportability of this idea to other villages within the town?
Sure, I'd be happy to touch on that. I mean, so I think what's important to understand here and that what I hope showed and came forward in our presentation is that downtown Hyannis is an incredibly unique ecosystem. It has been the core growth center for the town of Barnstable for decades and where we've put levels of regulatory incentives in place in order to direct growth there. Again, do I think zoning is something that we should review periodically from time to time to make sure that it is being responsive to our public's needs and desires? Of course they do. But I do want to say, you know, this was tailored, you know, very specifically to downtown Hyannis, down to really looking lot by lot at the uses that are there, at the sizes that are there, really going back and looking at the setbacks and the patterns. This was something we crafted very specifically to downtown Hyannis. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Cusack. Any follow-up? Any other counsel comment? Okay. So, moving forward, are there, are there any amendments?
Okay, I have, thank you. I have amendment number one.
Counsel Lutke.
I move to amend item number 2022-144, Section 1, by amending the downtown Hyannis zoning districts as shown on the map dated January 4, 2023, prepared by the Town of Barnstable Geographical Information System Unit and entitled, "Proposed Amendment to the Hyannis zoning map rezoning downtown Hyannis. Proposed Amendment to the town zoning map rezoning downtown Hyannis," as presented at this meeting and shown on the screen.
Second.
Second.
We have first and a second. Any discussion?
Should we have a staff explanation?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, President Levesque. So Counselor Lutke has put forward a map amendment that would change the zoning district proposed for 23 properties on School Street in Hyannis from downtown village as originally proposed to downtown neighborhood. The properties on School Street are part of a national register historic district. Fifteen of the subject properties are contributing buildings within that district. And on this street, the neighborhood character, that single-family residential character, remains strongly intact. The proposed change in district designation would reinforce the preservation of the historic character on this street with minimal potential impact to the uses that are permitted there today.
Thank you, Director Jenkins. Any further discussion? Okay. Okay. Not seeing any. Thank you for the rationale. And this is, I believe the amendments can be done in majority vote, so you can signify your approval.
Just a question.
Okay, here we go.
So this is an amendment. Is it a majority of those of us present? Is that, is that what passes?
The president is voting.
It's in voting.
Any other questions? Okay. So signify your approval by raising a hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Abstentions? That passes.
Okay.
Counsel Lutke? Continue, please.
Thank you. I also have amendment number two. I move to amend item number 2022-144, Section 3, by amending Section 240-24-1-12, parentheses D, parentheses 1, 2, parentheses 1, renumber subsections B and C to subsections A and B respectively, and, two, amend the renumbered subsections A by inserting the words "School Street" after the word "South Street." So the subsection reads, "Office and healthcare clinic uses are permitted only for lots fronting South Street, School Street, or High School Road."
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any counsel discussion? Please.
So, proposed amendment number two by Counselor Lutke is a companion to the map change just approved in amendment one. This amendment would allow for office and healthcare uses to continue to be permitted on School Street in the DN district, downtown neighborhood district.
Thank you, Director Jenkins. Okay. Any questions? Discussion? Okay. Not seeing any. If you could signify your approval by raising a hand and saying aye.
Aye.
That's, any opposed? Abstentions? Sorry, can't swivel my head fast enough. Just want to make sure I get everybody. So, that passes.
Mr. President, you could just announce that I'm speaking.
Okay, will do. That is unanimous. Again, my head going back and forth, sometimes people put their hands down before I can see them, but I didn't see any abstentions or opposed, so that passes. I know, I gotta move my head faster, I guess. So, okay. Moving on, do we have another amendment? Counsel Clark, please.
Thank you very much, President Levesque. Amendment number three. I move to amend item 2022-144 with amendment number three as presented at this meeting and shown on the screen. Can we have staff support? Thank you.
Director Jenkins, please.
Do we need a first and a second?
Yeah, so you made a motion. So instead of reading it in the record, you'd rather say as written, and then, just so, do we have a second?
Second.
Can we have first and a second? And if we can.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, again, as we move through these, a lengthy amendment, and I'm happy to provide an explanation, this amendment aims to provide an opportunity for large projects in downtown Hyannis districts that are permitted by right, so again, without the review or approval of a discretionary board, to be reviewed administratively at a public meeting allowing for public comment. So the amendment first establishes a threshold for what would be considered a major project in the downtown Hyannis growth incentive zone. And that's established as development of a new building or a new parking lot, and that's consistent with the definition of development currently in the code, or expansions of 5,000 square feet or more, or five or more parking spaces. So again, we establish this threshold of what, what we consider a major project requiring public review in downtown Hyannis is. And then projects that meet or exceed these thresholds would be required to be reviewed through the town's established formal site plan review process. So again, this is a, a process that we already have in place that all projects, new development projects have to go through in the town of Barnstable. The addition here is that there would be the opportunity for public comment allowed at that meeting.
Okay, thank you, Director Jenkins. Counsel Shenep, please.
Just a question. Site plan review, is that currently an advertised activity? And if not, would this be?
So, formal site plan review is posted 40, the agenda is posted 48 hours prior to the meeting. So it is a meeting held essentially in accordance with the open meeting law requirements. It is not noticed, so we do not, projects there are not required to, for example, run an ad in the paper or notice of butters.
Okay. So there's a 48-hour notice, just like there is for any other public meeting?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further questions? Counsel Clark.
Thank you very much, President Levesque. And for your edification, Counselor Clark, Counselor Shenep, sorry. There is a, a second amendment following this that would request or ask that at least 10 days prior to the formal site plan review meeting, that notice of the meetings be mailed to the butters. So this would, this is dependent upon amendment number three being passed. So this is to give notice to butters. So this first amendment is to, that it, that there shall be public comment. And the second one is that there shall be mailed official notice. To clarify.
Thank you, Counsel Clark. Any other discussion? So this is for just, again, the first part, public notice, I'm sorry, public comment allowed at site plan review. So no further discussion? If you could signify your approval by raising a hand and saying aye?
Aye.
Please continue, Counsel Clark.
Thank you very much, President Levesque. Amendment number four. I move to amend item number 2022-144, Section 3, by amending Section 240-24.1.3b2 by inserting the following new subsection, b2. At least 10 days prior to the formal site plan review meeting, notice of the meeting shall be mailed to a butters within 300 feet of the subject property. I need a second.
Need a second? First and a second? Could it further explain, please?
Thank you. So this one stands fairly self-explanatory. This dovetails with amendment three just approved, but in addition to requiring public comment at a public meeting, this would add a 10-day mailed notice requirement to a butters within 300 feet of a qualifying project of the formal site plan review meeting.
Thank you, Director Jenkins. Any questions, comments? Counsel Steinheiner, please.
Just to tighten up language on this, would it be preferable to have it say something along the lines, you know, postmark 10 days prior? So it's not left as vague? I don't know. Any discussion?
I would accept that amendment.
So I can make a friendly amendment? Or should we have some language rewritten?
Should we take a recess? Okay. Let's take, actually, take a three-minute recess if anybody needs to use restroom. Thank you.[1338.97]
Oh, I hate that. I like take out and I have one bite of it and I was like, I don't feel well. I'm so sorry, Stephen, like you're just not ready to go.
I'd like to welcome everybody back. You ready to go?
I'd like to welcome back to the town council meeting here. Principal Town Council, here we are, February 2nd, still 2023, and continued discussion in regards to what is known now as amendment four in front of us. So would it be possible, would it be? Just wait on Councilor Clark, I think? Would it be proper to read the amendment now as amended? Okay.
So Councilor Steinheber's motion is to amend Councilor Clark's amendment to change the language of the new subsection b2, so that it reads, "Prior to the formal site plan review meeting, notice of the meeting shall be mailed to property owners whose properties are within 300 feet of the subject property with such notice postmarked at least 10 days in advance of the meeting." So the vote is on Councilor Steinheber's motion to make that amendment to Councilor Clark's amendment.
No, I'll move that amendment to the amendment.
Second.
So we have a first and a second, any discussion? Sure? Okay. So with that, we're amending, we're voting to amend the amendment.
The first vote is to amend the amendment and then the vote will be on the amendment as amended.
Correct, thank you. So what I just said, and please raise your hand.
That should be a song.
Yes, raise your hand and signify your approval by saying aye?
Aye.
It is unanimous to amend the amendment. Now, we will now vote to-
On the amendment.
On the amendment as it is amended. Thank you for singing along. We should have did that four-part harmony. So that being said, if you could raise your hand and signify your approval by saying aye?
Aye.
And that is also unanimous. That passes. Thank you, Council Clark. Thank you, Council Steinheber.
Okay.
Councilor Schnepp, please.
I'll give it a try, Mr. President.
Let's go.
This is an amendment to item number 2022-144, section three, by a, amending section 240-24.1.9, section c, to label the table at the end of such section as Table 1. And b, amending said Table 1 by amending the specific use veterinary services as follows. In the DMS district, change N to SP. In the DV district, change N to SP. I'm assuming is no to special permit.
Thank you, Council Schnepp, thank you for the second.
Thank you.
Further discussion?
Director Jenkins. This amendment would allow veterinary services by special permit, SP, special permit, in the downtown Main Street District and downtown Village District. We've heard that such services are in high demand for residents and travelers alike. I will note that under the general umbrella of commercial services, animal care is permitted, is permitted. But as written, veterinary services would be excluded in these districts. The special permit requirement would allow such uses to be reviewed by our planning board for neighborhood compatibility. Frequently, veterinary services come sometimes with kenneling or outdoor areas. So in a, in a compact area, it would allow for that second level of review. Thank you.
Thank you. So a first and a second, any further discussion about our four-footed friends? Okay, that being said, if you could raise your hand and signify your approval by saying aye?
Aye.
That is approved unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to offer an amendment, item number 2022-144, section three, by amending, one, Table 1, specific use, multi-unit dwelling in the DN District to change N to L. And two, in chapter 240-24.1.2d1, to insert the following new subsection c. Multi-unit dwellings are permitted in the DN District with a maximum of four dwelling units permitted in any one building per lot. In addition, one accessory dwelling unit may be permitted per lot. Multi-unit dwellings shall be prohibited for lots fronting on only Brookshire Road or Kingsway. Estimative.
Further-
Second.
There we go. Further explanation, Director Jenkins?
This would, this amendment would allow for structures in the downtown neighborhood district to have up to four units. Many of the dwelling units and existing dwelling units in the downtown neighborhood district are larger, older homes that could potentially be divided into multi-unit dwellings with little change to the exterior appearance of those buildings. So just to clarify, this would allow up to essentially four, four units in a, in a single structure in the downtown neighborhood district.
Excellent, thank you for the explanation. Any further discussion questions in regards to this? Everybody clear? Everybody's head down, so just want to make sure no one has any comment. Okay, very good. Not seeing any questions, I would say please raise your hand and signify your approval by saying aye?
Aye.
That is unanimous. Okay. Thank you. Back to you, Council Schnepp, maybe?
I'll take that one, President Leveque.
Yes, thank you.
Amendment number seven, I move to amend item number 2022-144 with amendment number eight, as presented at this meeting and shown on the screen. I need a second.
We have first and a second? And, I'm sorry, Director Jenkins, further explanation, please?
Thank you. I will note we missed seven, but we can proceed to eight if Sarah can put that up on the screen and then go backwards.
I think I read seven.
Yeah, she read seven. I thought she did. No?
Nope, she said.
Oh, she said eight.
I'm sorry.
Why don't we move, yeah, go ahead, start over.
Sorry about that. Amendment number seven, I moved to amend item number 2022-144. Oh, it's printed incorrectly. With amendment number seven, as presented at this meeting and shown on the screen.
Okay. Here we are. First and second, amendment number seven. Further discussion and explanation, Director Jenkins, please.
So amendment number seven requires deals specifically with the use categories, retail sales and food and beverage services in three of our districts, Transportation District, Highway Commercial District, Downtown Hospital District. This amendment would require special permits for retail food and beverage service uses established in these three districts, in the Transportation Center District for establishments over 5,000 square feet, and the Highway Commercial and Downtown Hospital Districts. By requiring a special permit for these uses in these three districts, it allows those uses to be reviewed by the planning board at a public hearing and allows for the board to impose conditions, safeguards, and limitations on time and use. So again, requiring a special permit for retail sales, food and beverage services in our Transportation Center District, our Highway Commercial District, and our Downtown Hospital District.
Okay. I know Council Clark has left the dais, oh, returning.
Apologize.
That's okay. Just want to make sure, return to the dais. So any further discussion in regards to this? Any questions for Director Jenkins' staff in regards to this amendment? Clarification? What was? So what exactly again are we changing and why?
So again, this, this relates to the particular uses, retail sales, food and beverage services, AKA restaurants. Currently, in the use table, they are, they are listed as uses that are permitted by right in our Transportation Center District, our Highway Commercial District, so that's the stretch of Route 28 north of downtown, and the Hospital District. Currently, they're all listed as permitted uses. So this would change in the Transportation District, the use from being permitted by right to limited, meaning if there is a over 5,000 square foot restaurant or retail use in our Transportation District, it would have to come in for a special permit. In our Highway Commercial District, requiring those uses to come in for a special permit. And then in the Downtown Hospital District, requiring those to come in as a special permit. So not much change there. I think what drove this amendment was discussion regarding the fact that those uses are in most cases in the Highway Commercial District, required by special permit today. We use a standard that's very difficult to, for staff and our building commissioner to enforce, which is increase in vehicle trips, if the use increases vehicle trips, but that's very subjective, very hard to enforce in our, in our current, in our current gateway districts up on, up on Route 28. So again, this would require those uses in those districts to go to the planning board for a special permit.
Okay, thank you.
Is it because you can have 5,000 square feet? Is that what's triggering this? Because it's a larger establishment in these zones?
In Transportation Center, yes. In Highway Commercial or Downtown Hospital, I think the concern is that these are uses. So in Highway Commercial, I will note that I think the concern is that these are uses that, you know, do tend to generate trips. They are more likely to be in the context larger corporate investments that may need additional scrutiny. And again, just making sure that there's that additional level of review in an area, you know, that we all know is very congested and, you know, just, just making sure the planning board has the ability to take a closer look at that. So we're not saying they're not appropriate for these areas. What we're saying is, you know, we feel like, given the context of these three districts, that just having an additional level of review to allow us to potentially impose conditions or safeguards is appropriate.
Thank you, Director Jenkins. Any other counsel comment, questions in regards to this? Okay. If you would like to raise your hand and signify your approval by saying aye? Any against? So. Hmm, so we have one, two, three. Yep, so we have eight, four, two against. But it passes. Okay, moving forward.
Thank you very much, President Leveque. Amendment number eight, I move to amend item number 2022-144 with amendment number eight, as presented at this meeting and shown on the screen.
First and a second, further discussion, Director Jenkins?
Thank you. So this amendment proposes to require the planning board to make a finding in connection with the grant of a special permit in the Highway Commercial District. The board would be required to find that proposed projects do not, quote, "create a substantial adverse impact on the roadway network" and demonstrate compliance with the access management standards that are already written in this section. This amendment is to propose, propose to provide guidance to the planning board when considering projects in an area, again, where roadways are already very congested and provide added rationale for potential conditions that that board may choose to impose to mitigate traffic concerns. So in short, you know, this acts potentially as guidance to the planning board that when they are reviewing uses or developments in this district, again, in the Highway Commercial District on 28 that need a special permit, to essentially, to essentially look at them and ensure they do not create a substantial adverse impact on the roadway network.
And so this is only the Route 28 part, correct?
Correct. This amendment applies only to the Highway Commercial District. So projects requiring a special permit in the Highway Commercial District. So again, guidance to the planning board that one of the, one of the conditions that requires further scrutiny in this particular district is traffic and associated improvements necessary to mitigate traffic conditions.
So just to clarify, because we don't have a map in front of us necessarily, it's basically from the Rotary to Camp Street.
Correct.
Okay.
The length of 28.
Great, thank you. Any discussion questions? Council Steinheber, please.
Again, it's, you know, it's vague language. So what's the definition of substantial? Two cars, or seven cars, or nine and a half cars?
So in reality, and as we know, when the planning board reviews projects in, you know, in this district, or projects that are, you know, that may have a adverse traffic impact. Procedurally, how this works at the board is the applicant will typically submit a traffic study. The board will peer review that traffic study. And based on all that data, you know, they will, they will come to a conclusion that again, they, there are traffic impacts that have been mitigated, or in some cases, there are traffic impacts that have not been mitigated. And the adverse impact may be, you know, a degradation in level of service or a concern about safety on the roadway. So again, this is a cue to the planning board to pay special attention to those types of conditions in this district.
Thank you. Any other questions, discussion? Council Shaughnessy, please.
I guess one of my big concerns with this one is I think we can all agree at present, we're talking about a section of road that would probably be graded as an F in terms of, you know, access to getting through the Willow Street Route 28 corridor right now. We already know the airport rotary is graded an F in terms of traffic. You know, it's a fail. And since we're enacting this under those present conditions, I don't see how anyone could say they're not going to contribute. I mean, it's already, and the fact of the matter is, that rotary and that highway are not under our control. They're under state control. I just fear that putting this additional requirement in there about traffic studies, you know, we have yet to see what the net result of the improvements at the Yarmouth Road, you know, that intersection are going to be. But it's never been great in my lifetime, so I just, that's my concern with regard to this. Is this just going to throw a bar out to all new construction? Because that is going to remain a heavily trafficked, gridlocked area in the summertime, no matter what we do. And therefore, you know, anything new is going to have trouble going in there. So that's just a concern of mine for this item.
I would agree with your concern. Anybody else? Council Steinheber, please.
Just to follow on to that, it just, you know, in the beginning, we were talking about this item, we were talking about eliminating- about this item, we were talking about eliminating, you know, cumbersome hurdles to things. And as Counsel Shaughnessy just, you know, indicated, that stretch of road is already cumbersome by itself. And if the purpose here is to create some predictability and encourage investment, I think putting up more hurdles and creating more cumbersome situations is not really ideal to the intent of what we're trying to do. So I wouldn't be in favor of this.
Thank you, Counsel Steinheiner. Anybody else? Okay. So time to vote, no discussion. So please raise your hand and signify your approval by saying aye. Two, and those who are opposed? And abstentions? One abstention. So two, four, seven against, one abstention. Does not... Does not pass. Counsel Clark, please.
Thank you very much, President Levesque. Amendment number nine. I move to amend item number 2022-144, Section 3, by amending Section 240-24.1.9 E1A2 by striking the words "fronting Main Street" or... So it reads, "Real property in the Downtown Hospital DH District is exempt." I need a second.
Second. And further explanation? Director Jenkins, please.
So this amendment deals with a very, very particular situation, based on a very particular building form, essentially a U-shaped building on Hyannis Main Street, and whether or not additional review might be needed for pickup areas. All along Hyannis Main Street, driveways are incredibly restricted and encouraged to be on side streets. A, you know, a situation where you had a forecourt with a drop-off might be associated with a new hotel or something like that. But in any event, we feel like the lack of review for this very unique development form on Hyannis Main Street is inconsistent with the purpose of trying to control frontage types and building orientation to the street in the ordinance. So from a staff perspective, we concur that additional review of, again, this very particular frontage, you know, frontage alignment on Hyannis Main Street necessitates further review.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion, comments in regards to this item? Not seeing any? If you could signify your approval by raising your hand, saying aye. That is unanimous, and it passes.
President Levesque, I'll take number 10.
Okay. Counsel Clark, please.
Thank you very much. I move to amend item number 2022-144 with amendment number 10 as presented at this meeting and shown on the screen.
You have a second? Further explanation? Director Jenkins, please.
Yes. So this amendment works with amendment number three, which was approved, which proposes to establish that threshold for major projects in the Downtown Hyannis District. This amendment required the... requires those major projects to submit a signed and stamped landscape plan as part of their development review submittal. This amendment would establish an objective threshold for this requirement and eliminate discretionary waivers by the building commissioner. So as it's written today, all projects must submit a landscape plan unless waived by the building commissioner. Now we have this new standard that we've set for what we consider major projects. So again, this would require all of those major projects, again, those that are likely to require extensive landscaping upgrades to their site to submit a certified landscape plan as part of their site plan review process.
Thank you for the explanation. Any counsel comment, discussion? Not seeing any? If you could signify your approval by raising your hand and saying aye. That is unanimous, and it passes. Oh, I'm sorry. Counsel Steinheiner is a no. So it is nine and one, please. Thank you. Sorry about that, Counsel Steinheiner. My peripheral vision is poor. Counsel Clark.
Thank you again, President Levesque. Amendment number 11. I move to amend item number 2022-144 with amendment 11 as presented at this meeting and shown on the screen.
You have a second? We have a first and a second. And further explanation? Director Jenkins, please.
Thank you. So amendment number 11 essentially requires major projects to submit a landscape bond. It works with amendment number three, again, which passed, which proposes to establish that threshold for major projects. This amendment requires financial security for landscaping for those major projects, again, to reinforce, really, two things. That landscaping is installed the way they say they're going to install it, as shown on that certified landscape plan. And second, that it's maintained for an adequate period, you know, at least three years, that allows it to be properly established. This amendment responds to, again, our updated landscaping requirements proposed in zoning and provides an additional tool to help ensure that there'll be follow-through on that planting and maintenance. These landscaping bond requirements have become essentially standard in major projects that we approve through special permits and regulatory agreements with the move towards more by right approvals. This gives an additional tool for staff to ensure that developers are following through with their landscape commitments.
Would something like this protect us from, they say, somebody was opening a business in the wintertime, wasn't able to do plantings, to get a temporary occupancy, and, you know, fail to... Springtime comes to planting? Is that the type of thing that would protect us against?
That's an excellent question. There is actually another provision in the code that deals with that specifically. So if you're a smaller project, say, that may not be subject to this, you want to move ahead and get your CO now in February, you're allowed to post that bond. So that is addressed in actually the proceeding section here. This deals, again, with those larger projects, bonding those, making sure that they get installed the way they're supposed to be and are, again, maintained going forward.
Thank you. Vice President Cullen, please.
So there's currently no provision for that, for the 5,000 square foot plus in this?
We have no requirement to bond for your landscaping in zoning today.
Is it a problem? Have we had problems with this in the past?
It can be a problem.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Cullen. Any other questions? Statham? Okay. Not seeing any? Please signify your approval by raising your hand and saying aye. That is unanimous. It passes. Back to you, Counsel Clark.
Thank you, President Levesque. Amendment number 12. I move to amend item number 2022-144 with amendment 12 as presented at this meeting and shown on the screen.
You have a second? We have a first and a second. And further explanation? Director Jenkins, please. Thank you.
Thank you. So amendment number 12 is essentially a cleanup and clarification item that proposes to add descriptive language to three district intent sections to give a little bit more explanation of what we mean in those districts when we say mid-rise building. So this is not a regulatory change, but again, just a clarification when we're talking about mid-rise building in regards to these three sections.
Thank you, Director Jenkins. Any questions in regards to... Counsel Lucky, please.
Yeah. This is our first time seeing these, and what jumps out to me is you're defining mid-rise two different ways, which I think is confusing. Couldn't you, in the last paragraph, call it low-rise? I don't see how you can use mid-rise and then define it differently depending on... I see that leading to confusion.
So let me be clear. We are not... These are not definitional terms within the ordinance. These are contained... Every one of the seven districts has a descriptive intent section that just gives the user a little context of the character of the district and what to expect out of the regulations. So again, there was some concern that the, you know, the phrase "mid-rise" was subjective or could be interpreted subjectively. So this merely helps the user or the reader of the zoning ordinance give some sort of indication of the, again, existing development pattern that's there and was potentially allowed under the zoning that they're looking to use.
Yeah, I would... I'd still like to get rid of mid-rise in the last paragraph and just call it low-rise, but if nobody else has a problem, I guess that's my own situation. I find it confusing.
Any other further discussion? Counsel Cullen, please.
So we already have the provision that four stories is the highest you can go. So mid-rise can't be any greater than four, and it's got to be greater than one because it's mid. So I don't see the relevance. Am I missing it?
So again, these are not regulatory statements. You know, the permitted building height in each one of these districts is dealt with in the dimensional tables. Again, this is a, you know, these are descriptive phrases, and it's just helping folks give a little bit more understanding of, you know, what we mean by that phrase, because mid-rise in Hyannis might mean something different than mid-rise in South Boston means. So it's just an indicator to the reader of what to expect in terms of the district.
Thank you. Any other counsel discussion? Okay. Move to a vote. The signify... I'm sorry. Raise your hand and signify your approval by saying aye. How many we got? Leave your hands up, please. Ms. Janet, can you count those, please? Any opposed? Two. Abstentions? Obviously not. So eight, two. It passes. Vice President Cullen, Madam Vice Chair.
It's the moment I've been waiting for. Okay. I move to amend item number 2022-144, Section 3, by amending Chapter 240, 24.1.9 C1 by adding the new subsection C as follows. C accessory uses are permitted as set forth in Article 5 of the Barnstable Zoning Ordinance.
Second.
First and a second. Further discussion?
Thank you. So this amendment clarifies some questions that we got from the public throughout this process. It clarifies that accessory uses are permitted and regulated in these downtown Hyannis zoning districts in the same manner that they are permitted and regulated in all other zoning districts.
Any further discussion? Not seeing any? Please raise your hand and signify your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, and it passes. Counsel Cullen?
I move to amend item number 2022-144, Section 3, by amending, number one, Table 1, specific use boat storage to add the words "and repair," so that it reads "boat storage and repair." And, number two, the specific use under the HH Hyannis Harbor District as follows. Change boat storage and repair from N to P, so not permitted to permitted.
Second.
You have a second? Further discussion?
Thank you. So this amendment would reestablish the use permissions for what we generally think of as working waterfront uses in the Hyannis Harbor District, specifically boat storage and repair, to match what is in the ordinance today. We talked a lot about the Hyannis Harbor District throughout this process and why it didn't go further. I think we all agree that a more comprehensive study of land use and appropriate building form in the Harbor District is necessary, and that some of the very small adjustments that we made in that district should be thought really as part of that comprehensive overhaul and not moved forward here.
Any further discussion? Okay. Not seeing any? Please raise your hand and signify your approval by saying aye. That is unanimous, and it passes.
Okay. I move to amend number... I'm sorry. Item number 2022-144, Section 3, by, number one, amending Table 1, specific use marina in the HH Hyannis Harbor District to change SP to P, that's special permit to permit, and, number two, inserting in Chapter 240, 24 dot 1 dot 1 for Hyannis Harbor District, the following new subsection D2. Accessory uses permitted to a marina include, but are not limited to, the sale, rental, storage, and repair of boats, marine fueling, and marine contracting.
You have a second?
Second.
Further explanation? Director Jenkins?
So again, this amendment simply clarifies that working waterfront and marina uses permitted in the Hyannis Harbor District may include customary accessory uses. Now that it's a little bit more clear what is and is not permitted in that district as principal permitted uses, there was some concern that businesses that are currently operating that have customary, again, very customary and limited accessory uses may somehow be limited in doing those going forward. So this just establishes the permissions that marina uses have, again, as customary accessory uses today.
Okay. Thank you for that. Any further discussion, questions? Not seeing any? Okay. If you could raise your hand and signify your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous, and it passes. Counsel Cullen, please.
Yes. This is... I move to amend item number 2022-144, Section 3, by amending Chapter 240, 24 dot 1 dot 1 for Hyannis Harbor District by inserting the following new subsection D1B. Occupation of a single indoor commercial space greater than 5,000 square feet by any food and beverage service or retail sales use requires a special permit.
Second.
First and a second. Further explanation? Director Jenkins, please.
So this simply was an omission on the part of staff. There is an L in the use table, but no associated use limitation in the district chapter. So this just adds what that limitation was intended to be, which is a requirement for such uses over 5,000 square feet.
Thank you, Director Jenkins. Any further discussion? Not seeing any? If you could raise your hand and signify your approval by saying aye. That passes, and it is unanimous.
Okay. I move to amend item number 2022-144, Section 3, by amending Chapter 240, 24 dot 1 dot 9, Section D, Table 2, by striking the existing language under the heading "onsite shared parking adjustment" and inserting the following. For the commercial services use category, reduce by 50% the required spaces for commercial services where mixed with residential uses on the same lot. For cultural services use category, reduce by 20% the required spaces for cultural services where mixed with residential uses are on the same lot. For the use of office cat... I'm sorry. For the office use category, reduce by 50% the required spaces for office where mixed with residential uses on the same lot. For the retail sales use category, reduce by 20% the required spaces for retail sales where mixed with residential uses on the same lot.
Second.
First and a second. Further explanation? Director Jenkins, please.
So I will be incredibly honest. After working on this for, you know, quite some time, when we came back to this at the end of the day and looked at it, we felt like we were getting inconsistent determinations back from staff on how to apply the shared parking provisions in the table. And at the end of the day, it felt like the language and the way the table was written was unclear. So this is an attempt to clarify that and make sure those shared parking adjustments are right-sized and not too generous. I think there is a reading of the current ordinance that I think would make them too generous. There was not an intention of staff in any way to reduce the minimum requirements for residential development on a lot. The intention was always, when you have a residential development, perhaps shared with a commercial development, to reduce the commercial requirements. So this is adjustments to the column in the parking requirement tables that, again, apply where there are two or more uses that typically generate a demand for parking at different times of day, clarify that those reductions are always made from the non-residential parking requirements, maintaining minimum parking requirements for residential uses. And I will note, we ran probably a dozen different scenarios to make sure, under, you know, depending on your ratio of commercial to residential, that we felt like this was producing a fair requirement in all of the scenarios, and we're confident that these reductions are appropriate as written.
Thank you for that. Any counselor discussion, questions? Counsel Starr, please.
Thank you. Thanks for the explanation. But if I look under commercial services, the only allowed uses are basically recrea- basically recreational facilities. So you're assuming that all those would, people would be done at 5:00? I'm not sure what Commercial Services, most of them are prohibited.
So, again, this applies in all districts. So I'm not sure exactly what district you are looking at.
I'm looking at all the districts.
You're looking at all the districts. So.
The table?
So, again, take for.
Am I on the wrong page? Mr. Cooper?
Table 2, right.
Table 2.
Yeah, Table 2, page 8.
Yeah, okay.
So this chain, yeah, so Table 2, again, minimum required accessory parking spaces, I'm sure we could pull it up on the screen if necessary. But the final column in that table, again, recognizes these adjustments, these credits that we're going to give to developments that have a mix of uses that allows shared parking. So, again, if you had a, a commercial use on the first floor, residential on the top, what this is doing is, in the case of, you know, in the case of commercial service, for example, allowing that commercial service requirement for parking to be reduced, in this case, by 50%. What we didn't want, and what we were afraid that, you know, what we were fearful was unclear, is that it would allow you to subtract 80% of your residential demand. And, you know, we felt that was a bridge too far. So, again, it applies across the board to the parking as required in all districts. But make sure we maintain at least that standard to have, to have parking for residential uses, but allows you a little bit more flexibility for your required parking for commercial uses.
Thank you. Any further questions? Council Star?
No.
Okay.
I'm on page, you're on page 10, Table 2, page 10?
Table 2. Table 2, minimum required accessory parking spaces.
Any other questions? Okay. If you can raise your hand and signify your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? So we have nine yes, one abstention, and it passes. Any other further discussion, councilors, in regards to this item as amended? Okay, so, not seeing any? We have voting on item 2022-144 as amended. And this is a roll call majority vote. What's that?
Someone wants to make that motion.
Oh, someone wants to make that motion, please.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Roll call majority vote, please. I mean, supermajority vote, two-thirds majority.
Okay. Counselors. Clark?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
Cuzack?
Yes.
Levesque?
Yes.
Ludke?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Schnep?
S.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Good.
That's unanimous and it passes. Congratulations.
I believe I have something to offer here.
One more.
I believe you do. Yep, one more.
Okay, I move that the town attorney's office, whoops, I move that the town attorney's office be authorized and directed to make corrective grammatical, clerical, or editorial changes which are non-substantive and as to form only to item number 2022-144 as approved by the town council and to submit a final version of such item to the town clerk within 14 days of such approval by the council.
Second.
First and a second, further discussion, further explanation? Director Jenkins?
So first, thank you very much, councilors, for all of your time and support and attention that you've given to this effort. It has been a long journey and as, along the way, the many cut and pasts that this went through was not kind to the automatic numbering in the document. So there are a number of places in the document where the numbering is off and essentially this would allow the town's attorney to go through and make those editorial changes to make sure there are no errors of that type in the ordinance.
Thank you. And so that will be done and brought back to the council for another supermajority vote? Okay. Okay, just making sure. That's what I thought, I just wanted to make sure the public understood that it is moving forward.
Maybe you could repeat that, because I don't think the public could hear, if they're watching at home, what.
What part do you want repeated?
That it's all non, I'll say it, they're all non-substantive changes.
Correct.
And it's not going to come back to us for another supermajority vote.
Correct, exactly.
It's just numbering, basically. It'll be available in 14 days. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Grammarly, that's what we're doing.
We need to vote.
Yes, we do, we do. And with that, thank you, Councilor Clark, is, if you can signify your approval by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous and it passes. Okay, moving on to our next item of old business. Council Shaughnessy, please, 2022-145.
Good night, everyone. Full as the council room has been since February of 2020.
Thank you for being here. Thanks for sticking around.
Thank you, President Levesque. This is old business, subject to public hearing, roll call two-thirds of the full council. Item number 2022-145, amending the code of the Town of Barnstable, Part 1, General Ordinances, Chapter 240 zoning, by amending Article 7, Sign Regulations.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Assistant Director, somebody for the rationale?
Good evening.
No, didn't hit the push.
Good evening, Kate Maldonado, Assistant Director of Planning and Development. So this amendment 2022-145 is a signage, amendment to their signage regulations, which is, it's a supplemental amendment to the previous amendment. So essentially, since we're establishing these seven new districts, each with unique names and unique boundaries, we have to update a few of our signage regulations. So, in some of the cases, we're actually not altering the allowable size, number, or height of signs, where it's just changing the zoning district title. However, the two zoning districts that are presented on the screen before you show where there's an instance where we're consolidating a few districts. So we want to make sure that the signing, signage regulations for Highway Commercial as well as our Downtown Village, that we take a more close look at that. So the Highway Commercial, this is consolidating, which is what is currently our Hyannis Gateway and our Gateway Medical. And so combining those two, the provisions of the existing signage regulations for those two districts, we're looking to incorporate the more generous signage that is proposed to be allowed. And then for the Downtown Village, that's consolidating what is now our office residential, sorry, office multifamily residential district as well as our medical services predominantly. And so what we're looking to do there with the new signage regulations is to allow signage for a wide variety of businesses, commercial properties, with respect to smaller scale of lots.
Thank you. So is there any, you know what? This is a public hearing, do we have any public comment in regards to this item? In the room? Do we have anything remote?
There's no virtual public comment at this time.
So I would close the public hearing, back to the council for discussion, questions? Okay, not seeing any? This is a supermajority, two-thirds, roll call vote, please.
Counselors. Clark?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
Cuzack?
Yes.
Levesque?
Yes.
Ludke?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
It is unanimous and it passes. At this point in time, I would like to welcome back Council Rap Grissette and Councilor Atzulis for this item.
I think Councilor Neary has to still remain custo, he stated that he's recused from this item.
Oh, yeah. On the corner chair with the dunce cap.
There's going to be no goldfish left in there.
You just finishing your fishies? You just finishing your fishies?
Thank you. You did good. That looks faster than I think.
You are? I did. Somebody else did and I charmed him down. Get back in the box.
Three minutes. Three minutes for fighting. Three minutes for fighting.
Thanks for visiting. Okay, are we good? Councilor Clark is leaving the dais. Okay. But let's move forward and, actually, welcome back Council Atzulis, if you'd like, please, if you could, item number 2022-146.
This is item number 2022-146, amending the code of the Town of Barnstable, Part 1, General Ordinances, Chapter 240 zoning, by moving and renumbering Section 240-122.1, Registered Recreational Marijuana Cultivators, Research Facilities, and Testing Laboratories into a new overlay zoning district and repealing Sections 240-129 and 240-129.1, expired temporary moratorium for marijuana uses.
Second.
Director Jenkins for the rationale, please.
Thank you, President Levesque. Item 2022-146 is a zoning map amendment and a zoning text amendment corollary to 144, which was just approved. It deals with adult-use registered recreational marijuana cultivators, research facilities, and testing laboratories that the town council currently voted to allow within the formal medical services overlay district and the gateway medical zoning district. Now that new downtown Hyannis zoning districts have been voted, the boundaries of those medical service districts and gateway medical, and gateway zoning districts will change, have changed with the redrawing of the district lines. So in order to maintain the current configuration and extent of the allowed recreational marijuana uses, this amendment proposes to create an overlay district that mirrors the existing gateway, medical services and gateway medical zoning districts. And by doing this, every lot that, where the recreational marijuana uses are currently allowed, they will continue to be allowed. And every lot that does not allow them continues not to allow them within the district. There are no changes proposed to the current allowed location of recreational marijuana uses, and there are no changes proposed to the current extent of the recreational marijuana uses that are permitted. So, again, the, this is accomplished through both a map amendment and a text amendment. So, again, as you see here on the screen, sort of lifting those marijuana uses up into a separate overlay district, so essentially they remain unchanged from how they are applied in current zoning today. In addition, this amendment repeals two expired temporary zoning moratoria that related to marijuana uses. There was a temporary moratoria that we put in place while we were developing regulations regarding medical marijuana treatment centers that expired in 2014. And, again, the same with recreational marijuana establishments that expired on 2018. So as long as we were reorganizing all of the provisions that applied to marijuana uses in our code, we felt that this was a prudent time to go in and clean up some of those expired uses. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Jenkins. This is a public hearing, is there anybody here who would like to make public comment?
Thanks for staying.
Make sure the microphone's on, yeah. Make sure it's green, there you go.
Just clarification, I guess I was getting confused over what this particular meeting was going to be about. I know that there were some changes made earlier about the actual usage and facilities, whether they be cultivators, you know, testing facilities, et cetera. But what I'm trying to understand is, when it goes into, quote, an overlay district, what does that mean as far as recreational retail or anything like that? I mean, is this just still, because it used to be somewhere else other than here, and I must have missed those changes.
Actually, I still think it's in the same area. So it is, is just to.
It is still from when we first, did it pass?
It is still in the same area.
I thought it was out in the other end of town, so.
No, so that is the medical.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, right.
All right, so the medical is where it was.
No, 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 the medical is the medical.
Okay.
And the recreational, adult use, it should be called now, is what we are talking about right now.
Okay.
So there's no more additional uses.
Okay.
It's strictly because when we approved the Form-Based Code, it wiped out what was currently all there. So now we need to take what was there before, put it in an overlay, and put it back over again.
Okay.
It's like an Etch-A-Sketch. When you shake the Etch-A-Sketch and it disappears, that's what we did. And now we're going back into the Etch-A-Sketch, drawing the lines, and put it right back on top. Like that? It's late night, too. Came up with that.
So can I just ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
And if they're not appropriate, just let me know.
No, no, it's all right, go ahead.
So did this change the buffer zone between schools, churches, or any other, like childcare facilities and things like that?
I don't believe it did. But, of course, Director Jenkins, you can, you can correct me at any time, but I don't believe it does.
And then just one other question.
Yes.
Is it going to be, is there going to be overlay districts in the other villages? Will they be able to have this type of overlay district or are these uses permitted in the other villages as well?
Yeah, that would be a completely different item. That would have to go through all the different hoops to make that happen. This is strictly.
Hyannis overlay.
We're just basically kind of creating what was there before, and we're just allowing those same uses within that same area because of 144, we have to do 146.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, good question, thanks. Again, thanks for being here. And hopefully, if I missed anything, please fill in the blanks. Any other discussion in regards to this item? Oh, I'm sorry, is there any remote participation and public comment?
There's no remote participation.
Okay, so I would close the public hearing. Any other further discussion? Okay, not seeing any? Roll call majority vote, I'm sorry, roll call two-thirds majority vote.
Counselors. Cuzack?
Yes.
Rap Grissette?
Yes.
Levesque?
Yes.
Ludke?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Atzulis?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
100%, very good.
It's unanimous and it passes. And now we can welcome back Councilor Neary back to the dais. I'd like to welcome Councilor Neary back to the dais. I'd like to welcome Counsel Neary back to the dais. And it's great, you know, I just want to say, this is all 13 councillors here at the dais for the first time in a long time, so it's great. So that's exciting. So welcome, everybody. And we're gonna move on to the next item of old business. Counsel Stein Hilber, if you could, please help me. 2023-068.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is item 2023-068, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Children and Families to provide police detailed services as written.
First and a second. And Chief Sonnenbaum, Matthew Sonnenbaum here for the rationale. Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. President. Members of the council, Chief Sonnenbaum, Barnstable Police Department. Item number 2023-068, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Children and Families to provide detailed services by the Barnstable Police Department. Basically, we've been providing detailed services at the DCF office in Hyannis for many years, about four hours a week, various different days of the week. There's been a change in their policies with the state that they have to obtain a contract with each municipality that they obtain their detailed services with. So that's why this off—this authorization is here before you, requesting permission to enter into that contract with DCF so we can continue to provide them with that extra security for hours of police details each week. It's—the initial term is for 11 years, but then it's renewable by mutual agreement for up to a maximum term not to exceed 25 years. The fiscal impact is that we provide the services and they pay us directly for that. It's work that's done off the shift by officers that are not working currently. It's extra work that they do. So it doesn't—not overtime or anything else like that. It's detail pay. And it would follow the normal detail routines and procedures and how we fill them.
Thank you, Chief, for the rationale. Any questions for Chief Sonnenbaum? Okay. Not seeing any. If you could raise your hand and signify your approval by saying aye?
Aye.
I believe that's unanimous and it passes. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You as well. I'd like to walk on to the dais. Director of our CPC Board Chair, Lindsey Council. And if—Counsel Starr, please, if you could. Item number 2023-069.
Thank you, President Levesque. This is 2023-069. Appropriation order in the amount of $125,000 in community preservation historic preservation funds for Phase III exterior access restoration work to the Old Colonial Courthouse, 3046 Main Street, Barnstable.
Second.
Yeah, first and a second. If I could just pause one second, and I would entertain a motion to go past 11 o'clock.
So moved. Second.
First and a second. If you could raise your hand and signify your approval by saying aye?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any opposed? It's unanimous, passes. Let's keep going.
Okay.
That's Counsel Ludkey's seat, too. So we have that first and a second. And Lindsey, for the rationale, please.
Thank you. Lindsey Council, Chairman of the Barnstable Community Preservation Committee. Tales of Cape Cod is requesting $125,000 in community preservation historic preservation funds for their Phase III exterior access project at the Old Colonial Courthouse located at 3046 Main Street, Barnstable. This funding request represents a portion of the estimated cost of the project, $372,497, with $120,000 of matching funds provided from a Massachusetts Cultural Facilities Fund grant, and $147,497 in additional grants and private donations. At this November 21, 2022, Community Preservation Committee meeting, the seven committee members present voted unanimously by roll call vote to recommend to the Town Council, through the Town Manager, the historic preservation and restoration work for this project. It includes the provision of accessibility to the building by installing a lift leading to a new accessible entrance on the east side of the building and regrading to create an accessible walkway to the building. Because the cost of Phase II restoration of the first-floor framing exceeded 30% of the assessed value of the building, Massachusetts law requires that the building be made compliant with regulations relating to building access for persons with disabilities. The Old Colonial Courthouse is one of the most historic buildings on Cape Cod. The property is listed in the National Register of Historic Places as a contributing element of the Old Kings Highway Historic District and is also listed on the Massachusetts Register of Historic Places and is a contributive property in the Barnstable Village Cultural District. Originally built in 1763, the Old Colonial Courthouse is the second courthouse constructed in Barnstable County and is one of the only two colonial-era courthouses remaining in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The building today provides a rich historical and cultural experience to Cape Cod residents and villa-visitors, helping to preserve and enhance the character of the region. Additionally, the building provides a venue for multiple programs, meetings, and events held by Tales of Cape Cod in collaboration with other local organizations. There is an existing historic preservation restriction recorded for the Old Colonial Courthouse. With me tonight is Gene Gill to do a brief presentation on the project.
Thank you, Mr. Gill, for being with us. Appreciate you waiting here. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I need to sign in?
No, you do not, sir.
Mr. President, members of the Town Council, thank you for the opportunity to present Tales of Cape Cod's application for community preservation fund—funding. As Lindsey has described, in 2020, 2021, we undertook a project to restore the frame—to repair the framing of the building. The cost of that project represented more than 30% of the assessed value of the building, and as a result, Massachusetts law requires that we make the building handicapped accessible. The first step in that project is to address the exterior accessibility of the project. I do have a short presentation. I will hit the highlights of these slides, and then, please stop me and ask questions if you have any questions. As Lindsey indicated, the total cost of this project is estimated to be $372,000. We have raised to date $250,000 from contributions from Tales of Cape Cod, from the Massachusetts Cultural Facilities Fund, from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts budget for 2023, and the Belzecian Family Foundation. I am appearing before you to request $125,000 from the Community Preservation Fund, and that will enable us to move forward with this project if it is awarded. This project started about 12 months ago. We have an issue on the east side of the building, namely that the building, given its age, all of the zoning—zoning of the building does not comply with current requirements. We have a 10-to-12-foot setback on the east side of the building. Current requirements are 15. We started talking with our neighbor to explain what we were doing. We got his support. We have talked to the building commissioner. He has indicated that a lift to provide handicapped accessibility of the building will be—will receive the same treatment—zoning treatment as a ramp would, which would be an exemption. In addition, the building has two preservation restrictions, one from the state and the second from the town. We have presented our plans to both the State Historic Commission and the Town of Barnstable and received their approvals. The timeline for this project—the project started roughly January of last year. We are currently, hopefully, moving into the final stages of fundraising, and we would like to complete this project either by late spring or if the project is delayed—which, given what's happening to construction projects right now, if it's delayed, we will probably delay the construction—the initiation of the construction until the fall so that we can use the building through the summer. This is a picture of the building as it will look with the handicapped accessibility features on the right-hand side of the building. One of the—we face three constraints with this project. One is the very small size of the—the lot. The second is the elevation of the building from the street. And the third is a strong desire to preserve the historical character of the building. We have worked with our architects to try to do that, and in general, we're very pleased that we will preserve the appearance of the building as it is, with the one exception of the east side of the building. This is a site plan. All of the work will be done in the area with the hatched red lines. This is a blow-up of that, showing that the walkway, starting on the right side, the walkway will lead around to the proposed lift. There will be a porch and a new entrance into the meeting room on the east side of the building. This project is actually part of a multi—multi-stage project that began in 2019. At that point, we undertook a project to replace the roof on the building. CPC funded—provided 57% of that, and Tales of Cape Cod was unable to provide any funding. If you follow the statistics, we completed the second phase of the project. CPC funding provided 47%. Tales of Cape Cod provided 15. And for this project, we are asking for 33% of the total cost of the project, and Tales of Cape Cod is able to contribute 27%. So the basic message of this is that we get it, that we need to build a strong organization, and we—we will continue to seek outside funding whenever we can, but we need to be in a position to maintain the building ourselves. This will—as I indicated—is part of a multi-year project. The next project that we will do in—or—is to address the handicapped accessibility on the west and south sides of the building. That will require regrading the front lawn to give us sufficient run room to get to the elevation that we need, resetting the brick sidewalks. I expect that will cost $100,000, and we are continuing to raise funds for that now. If we're successful in raising that money between now and September, then that will be included in the scope of this project. There is one big project that remains, and we don't have any particular timeline for that right now, but we will have to address the interior accessibility of the building, and that will require adding handicapped restrooms. The plan for that is to bump out the east side of the building and—that would provide handicapped restrooms and enlarged kitchen as well as storage area. And that's what the final project would look like, with the blue line indicating the new wall. That concludes my slideshow. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Gill. Appreciate that. Any questions? Okay. I believe this is a public hearing. Is there any public comment regards to this item?
There's no virtual public comment.
Okay. I would close the public hearing. Okay. My index here. And this would be a roll call majority vote of the full council.
Councillors. Rap Krasetti?
Yes.
Levesque?
Yes.
Ludkey?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Atzulis?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Cullum?
Yes.
Cusack?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. And thank you for your investment in our community. Moving on to new business. We did. I did it in the middle of that item. That's okay. That's all right. Well, I'm sorry? Counsel Cullum, would you like to do that?
I just want to know if we can do that.
Okay.
They're not all referred.
Town Attorney Karen Nobur, since the rest of the items are referred to a public hearing, can we do them in—as a group?
Well, some are for the planning board and some are for the—I don't think we can.
All right, for the 216. So let's just keep moving forward. We'll get through it quickly. So Counsel Neary, please, if you could. Item number 2023-128. We've already done those.
Mr. President, yes, this is new business to be referred to a public hearing on 216, 2023. It's item number 2023-128. It's an appropriation order in the amount of $300,000 to fund disposal costs at the Solid Waste Division of the Department of Public Works, as it's written.
Second.
First and a second. It is referred to a public hearing, so please raise your hand and signify your approval by saying aye?
Aye.
It passes unanimously. Counsel Cusack, please, if you could. Item number 2023-129.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, under new business, we have item number 2023-129. Appropriation order in the amount of $206,391 to fund information technology—pardon me—security improvements. Refer to a public hearing February 16, 2023.
Second.
First and a second. Again, referring to a public hearing. Please raise your hand and signify your approval by saying aye?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Counsel Mendez, please, if you could. Item number 2023-130.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is new business. Item 2023-130. Appropriation order in the amount of $1,444,398 for the school department for the purpose of funding the Barnstable Public School District wide lead light replacement project. This is to be referred to a public hearing on 216, 2023.
Second.
We have first and a second. Again, removing—refer to public hearing to 16, 2023. Please raise your hand and signify your approval by saying aye?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. And Counsel Stein Hilber, please, if you could. 2023-131.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to refer item 2023-131 to a second read on February 16, 2023. Order authorizing the taking of road easements by eminent domain for sewer and water purposes over certain private roads in Centerville known as Earl's Court, Nobody Road, Quissett Road, Christina's Path, Captain Ellis Lane, Jenny's Path, Nancy's Lane, and a private way adjacent to Lot 11 as shown on a plan filed in Plan Book 288, page 18, the Barnstable County Registered Deeds, as written.
Second.
First and a second. Refer to public second reading to 16, 2023. Please raise your hand and signify your approval by saying aye? That passes. Counsel Atzulis, please. Item number 2023-132.
Order to discontinue and abandon the public way currently known as Mothers Park Road in Centerville, Mass. Provided this order shall be effective 30 days after the date on which it's approved by the Town Council. Refer to Planning Board.
Second.
First and a second. Referring to Planning Board. Please raise your hand and signify your approval by saying aye?
Aye.
Council passes unanimously. Sticking with Counsel Atzulis, item number 2023-133.
Seventy-two.
This is item number 2023-133. Order provided the Town Council as fir—first voted to abandon Mothers Park Road as a public way. The Town Council hereby authorizes the Town Manager to purchase, take by eminent domain under Chapter 79 of the General Laws of Massachusetts, otherwise acquire for sewer and water and general municipal purposes the fee through, under, across, and on Mothers Park Road, Centerville, as more fully shown on a plan to be filed in the office of the Town Council for the installation, operation, maintenance, repair, relocation, and replacement of sewer and water lines and infrastructure for the same and for all purposes of which such infrastructure is commonly used in the Town of Barnstable, and that to fund the same, that $22,700 to be provided from the reserves in the sewer construction and private way improvement special revenue fund, and that the Town Manager is authorized to contract for and expend said appropriation for such purposes and accept any gifts or grants in relation thereto. Any trees, buildings, and other structures located within said roads are not included in this order, and the owners of the same may have a period of up to 60 days after the recording of the order taken to remove the same. Names and addresses of the owners of said interest taken—taken and their mortgages as far as can be ascertained by the Town are, as set forth on Exhibit A, attached here to, along with any awards, if any, for damages sustained by said owners. Betterments will be assessed for the— Betterment will be assessed for the associated sewer and water improvements made by the Town of Barnstable.
Second.
Was that thorough enough?
That was thorough, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can you repeat that?
Referring to a public hearing.
Can you repeat that?
On March, yeah, on March 16, 2023.
You're a first and a second. It is after 11. You just never know what's going to happen. I'm referring to a public hearing on March 16, 2023. Please raise your hand and signify your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
Here we are. And, okay, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call, roll, can we, is this a, we can just, yeah. Please raise your hand and signify your approval by saying aye. That is unanimous. Adjournment passes.
Thanks, everybody. 7% increase in the average tax bill. Repeat that.